All set to go. Okay, good. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 2nd, Town Council Meeting to Order. If we could open up with a roll call, Clerk Samino?
Sorry, one moment. Counsel Hume.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Here.
Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Sasha.
Here.
Counsel Ringus.
Here.
Counsel Connors.
Here.
Counsel O'Brien.
Present.
Counsel Barica.
Here.
Counsel Mackin.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Sue. We do have a few people in attendance tonight. We do have a public hearing on the agenda, I believe. If you have a question, or if you, you can, there's a couple ways you can reach us tonight. You can email all the councilors at towncouncil@braintreema.gov. And you can use the raise hand feature if we are in a public hearing. Not every item on our agenda is open to the public for discussion. You can also use the chat feature for questions. If we can address them to the matters at hand tonight, we will. We can't promise we will get to everything, but if not, somebody will definitely get an answer back to you after the meeting. I will address those in the meeting if we can. If not, Sue Samino, our clerk of the council, will take your information and we will get to you after that. With that, we are moving on to announcements. I just want to commend the Town Clerk's Office and all their staff, and our very own Clerk Samino also supported the Town Clerk's Office with the election season, which to say it was quite a different experience this year was an understatement. The state put in place all these guidelines with not a lot of support. I know they were working seven days a week, multiple hours, and had a lot to deal with, not only with the consolidation of all the polling places, but with the early voting that couldn't be processed until yesterday at Election Day. So from all accounts, from what I've heard, overall, it was a very successful election season, not just a day this year. So kudos to our Town Clerk Jim Casey and his staff, Deb Starr, Jane Diaria, and Eric Co- blanking honestly?
Okay.
Coco, no. Dave, you're on mute or something. Counsel Ringus, sorry. So thank you to all them and Clerk Samino and all of the staff that Clerk Casey hired. We appreciate all you do to give everybody the right to vote. I hope everybody did get out to vote. There were so many options this year to do that, so that was appreciated. Couple of announcements from the Parks and Recreation Department. Counsel Ringus, do you have these, or am I going to read these?
I think these are you, Madam President.
Okay. All right. Full Basketball Skills Clinic for Kids begins. It's Tuesdays, September 15th through October 20th. I will be giving information for more details at the very end, so don't feel that you need to get all this information down. It's always, always available from our Town Clerk as well. So Tuesday, September 15th through October 20th, at the Outdoor Courts at Doherty Gym, the Braintree Recreation Department and Premier Hoops Basketball is teaming up to welcome all age five to 14 athletes to join us for a Fall Basketball Skills Clinic. This is encouraging all levels of players, whether you love playing basketball or have never played basketball, played before. Each skill session will feature unique ball handling, passing, and shooting skills. In line with COVID-19 regulations, participants will social distance and all drills will be non-contact. Participants will be required to wear a mask at all times. Please bring your own basketball. Cost is $75 per student. Parks and Recs Department also has yoga at the lake, which has been, happened a couple times already. It's at the beach at Sunset Lake. Anyone age 15 and up may participate. It's on Wednesday nights in September from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The cost is $15 per session. It's a moderate flow, appropriate for all levels of experience, incorporating strengthening, flexibility, breath work, and meditation. Please bring your yoga mat, towel, water, and a mask. All participants will practice a safe distance apart. In the event of rain, the session will be held in the auditorium at 74 Pond Street. Participants will be notified by email on the day of if there is a change in location. Another announcement is the Braintree Community Art Center is having various painting, sculpting, and ceramic classes through the week for both kids and adults. Classes are $15 each. All these activities, as mentioned above, are conducted in line with current COVID-19 and social distancing requirements. Residents with any questions are welcome to contact the Parks and Recs Office at 781-794-8901, 8901, 781-794-8901. Any other counsel with any additional announcements? Okay, seeing none, I do have one more. There's been a lot of talk about the Charter Review Committee. Myself and Counsel Ringus serve on this committee. Our last meeting was prior to the shutdown of COVID. And the plan at that time was to have public hearings for the public to weigh in on the charter review to get input from them. We were planning on holding. We had dates selected for evening sessions as well as weekend sessions, so it would be accessible to all. Obviously, those were canceled, so we were hoping to get back in person sooner than we are, and as it looks, no telling when we will be back. So I spoke to Peter Moran, who is the Chair of the Charter Review Committee, and we're looking to put something together for the end of September. It'll be a Zoom meeting for public input. What will happen after that will be determined at a later date. There's no date set yet. That information will be forthcoming once everybody's schedules are coordinated. I know many councils, as well as many people from the public, are inquiring about that. With that, Clerk Samino, we can move on to the approval of the minutes of July 15th, 2020. Is it, sorry, is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th, 2020?
Don't move, Madam President. Second.
There's been a made, motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, now a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Hi.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Hi.
Counsel Mackin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Hi.
Counsel Ringus?
Hi.
Counsel Ryan?
Hi.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to old business, item 20055, the mayor FY20 year-end line item transfers or take up any action relative there, too. Is there, this will be a public hearing? Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move, Madam President. Second.
There's been a motion to open the public hearing by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
I'm sorry, yes.
Counsel Connors?
Hi.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Hi.
Counsel Mackin?
Hi.
Counsel O'Brien?
Hi.
Counsel Ringus?
Hi.
Counsel Ryan?
Hi.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That was unanimous. I will now refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Counsel Barica, for your recommendation to the full council on this item.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of Ways and Means met earlier this evening, and we voted unanimously in favor of this recommendation. And then just for the residents who are in attendance tonight, this is really, we're moving money in between lines. This is not a request for new money, and it's not a request for new expenditures, just to clarify, just to clarify what this is.
Thank you, Counsel Barica. Any member from the mayor's office wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam President. Just would acknowledge, here with us this evening is Director of Municipal Finance Ed Spelman, Director of the Golf Course Darren Brown, and I believe the Director of Food Services, the manager of Food Services at the Golf Course, Justina, is also with us this evening, possibly as an attendee. We had a great committee meeting earlier this evening. As Chairwoman Barica mentioned, this is not a request for a new appropriation or authorization of new funds. This is effectively an administrative measure to help balance out the programs by moving funds from one program within each respective budget into another. Also during the committee meeting, we had an opportunity to hear from Mr. Brown about an update as to the golf course and operations of the golf course since starting this new fiscal year, as it compares to last fiscal year at this time. And if the, if the council was interested in hearing just the update on operations and revenue, I would certainly ask to defer my time to Mr. Brown to share that information.
I also want to thank you, Solicitor Chief Staff Tob, too. Jim Arsenault was on, I just moved him into the group, our Director of BPW. He's here with us as well. I cannot find Justina, though.
She's, she's calling in, she's on the public side.
Okay.
Well, she's here, and I'll say it, she's done a phenomenal job. I said this at the committee meeting as well. She's really done an incredible job breathing new life into the clubhouse at the golf course. And truly, I think anybody who's been there would agree, it's become a place where folks can go and hang out and enjoy a nice meal, maybe a beverage on the deck overlooking the golf course or inside the clubhouse space. So incredible, there she is, incredible. Kudos to Justina and obviously to Darren for all the work that they've done over there. I'm a big fan. I encourage folks to go if they haven't been, but they've really done incredible work to breathe new life over there.
Thank you, Clerk Tob. Anybody else from the mayor's office want to speak on this? I will just echo what Solicitor Tob said. I've been up to the golf course, and it is, it is, it's remarkable the transformation that it went through in appearance and in service. So I commend Justina and your staff. The food is phenomenal as well. And I see many golfers. I took up golf a couple years ago, so I've been able to go up there and enjoy a meal as well. So, great job. Any member from the council wish to speak on this item? Counsel O'Brien?
I'd actually defer to Nicole's offer, and I would like Darren to give us an update, please.
Since we, since we reopened in early May with state guidelines, it has been a fast and furious start to the season. And as the guidelines have loosened, such as with golf cart use and tee time spacing, and restaurant accessibility, pro shop opening up in fall, we really hit our stride just at the beginning of the new fiscal year in July, and all the way through August, and it continues now. We have been, for the, for the most part, sold out with maximum rates. We haven't offered any specials to entice people in. It's, we get more phone calls with people looking for tee times than we do anything else. And the great weather that's gone along with it has only been just another reason that revenues are where they're at. As I mentioned to Ways and Means Committee, Counsel O'Brien, we, we normally, you know, when you compare July in 2020 to a July in 2019, if we're up $10,000, $15,000, maybe $20,000 over the year prior, we're, we're excited. And we look at that as being a real, a real win for us. And the same with, with August. Last August was a record breaker for us. It was a great August. And through July and August, we are up almost $200,000 in just two months, which is, I've never seen anything like it in my 27 years. So while the pandemic is, had been horrible for golf, it has been, it has been a substantial benefit for us. We've, you know, I do think that we do run a good facility up there. I think we have a good reputation. And we do think we order, offer a good product at a good price. And our clientele have, have shown that. Food and beverage, despite not having any special events, no tournaments, no, no bridal showers, no baby showers, no reunions, is still up 16%. So hot dogs, beer, and soda go a long way. And they certainly have this year. And it has been a whirlwind this year, and we're, we're, we're holding on and trying to get through the next remaining six to eight weeks of the season. And we see no signs of it slowing down. It looks like the tee sheet sold out through the Labor Day weekend. The staff has been fantastic. We have a multitude of employees, from college kids to senior citizens that have come back on. And it has been, it has been a good experience for everybody through this whole process. We disinfect golf carts after every use. We're disinfecting bathrooms, common touch services. And I think we have a well-educated staff. And knock on wood, things have, things have gone well, and everybody has been healthy and happy to date. And we hope to continue that role through the rest of the 2020 season.
If I could, Madam President.
Thank you, Darren. Hold one sec. Darren, you said you didn't use any, wasn't Groupon offered early on in the season, I thought I saw?
So we have a, we have a, the point-of-sale system that we deal with is Golf Now. They're huge. They're owned by NBC Golf. So they'll actually buy tee times, and they will sell them on a third party with no, no cost for us, but it just gets us exposure. So we're not actually offering the deal ourselves.
So you're getting full price for the tee time?
Correct.
And resold. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Counselor, any, are you continuing, Counsel O'Brien?
Yeah, I just want to, thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Brown, that's good leadership. I think the expansion of the facility really helped, and God bless staycations. Thank you.
You know, you know, one thing I might add, which I, which I'm sure many of you have seen, we are seeing students attend class and people attend work meetings in a golf cart, doing Zoom. And I'm not, that, those are stories I'm not making up. You, someone will hit a ball into the woods, and they'll be attending two seconds of a class while they get called on, and then hit the phone and go on and play their next shot. So I guess we're the one recreation you can do while still on the clock.
Not a bad gig, Darren, right?
No, not a bad gig.
Any other counsel wants to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to the public to speak on Order 20055, the mayor, the FY20 year-end line item transfers, and I see Ms. Saros. You may speak. You need to unmute yourself. Hello? Ms. Saros, did you have your hand raised? Okay, I see it gone. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move, Madam President.
Second.
And a motion to close the public hearing by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Hi.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Hi.
Counsel Mackin?
Hi.
Counsel O'Brien?
Thank you for the update, Darren, and I.
Thank you.
Counsel Ringus?
Hi.
Counsel Ryan?
Hi.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Counsel Ringus, a motion, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the sum of 38, I'm sorry, I made, one moment. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was, I was correct, sorry. I would, I would move that the sum of $38,861 be transferred from the Municipal Finance Department Principal Program 50.
May I stop you?
36.
Excuse me. Yes, just want to get the numbers correct.
36,861, Counsel Ringus.
If I did have a moment. 38,861. Madam President, could you read that motion in? I seem to be missing it.
Yeah, the motion is that the sum of, and Director Spelman, you can correct us here if we, this is incorrect, that the sum of $36,861 be transferred from Municipal Finance Debt Principal Program 50, Bond Principal Account, to be transferred to the Municipal Finance Debt Interest Program 51, Bond Interest Account.
And I would move that motion.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Hi.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume? Counsel Mackin?
Hi.
Counsel O'Brien?
Hi.
Counsel Ringus?
Hi.
Counsel Ryan?
Hi.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. And the next motion?
I can do that if he doesn't.
I have that page, the first page is missing. I apologize.
Counsel Ringus, thank you.
As the golf enterprise, I would move that the sum of $37,594 be transferred from the Golf/Turf Maintenance Program 04/Labor Custodian Account, Golf/Food Service Program 07, Food Supplies Line Item, and $3,000 be transferred from Golf Building Maintenance Program 02, Lightning Account, to Golf Bond Principal Program 50, Bond Principal Account.
And a motion made by Counsel Ringus. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Hi.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Hi.
Counsel Mackin?
Hi.
Counsel O'Brien?
Hi.
Counsel Ringus?
Hi.
Counsel Ryan?
Hi.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to item 00220, Council President, the Town Council Rules. This matter was referred to Ordinance and Rules. At the April 7th, 2020 Town Council Meeting, a motion was made to use Town Council Rule 23 to suspend the rules and suspend the 90-day rule and hold a vote to approve the revised Town Council Rules at an upcoming Town Council Meeting. Our rules state these rules would normally be in place 90 days after. Due to COVID, things have changed. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chairman of Ordinance and Rules, Counsel Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. So as you did, there was various meetings of the Ordinance and Rules Committee that were held prior to COVID sort of rearing its head. Got through most of the rules in live person. We held one additional meeting via Zoom after COVID began to shut things down. At that meeting, we had a four-to-zero vote for approval of these sort of new rules that we had sort of adopted. You sort of indicated, these council rules are adopted every two years. And generally, like I said before in the past, these are not the most exciting of rules, but they are important because these are the rules by which we govern ourselves. These are the rules that sort of lead our meetings. These are the rules that we abide by in terms of making sure that these meetings run efficiently and they run smoothly. The packet was distributed to the full council. I will go through it. It is a little bit lengthy. Our initial hope in putting this off and initially sort of using Rule 23 to sort of suspend having to adopt them was the hope that at some point we would be back in sort of the live auditorium. Just, I think it would have made it a little bit easier, but these have been distributed to the council members. I'm going to go through where some of those changes were. I know that there are some amendments that have proposed by other councilors, and we can get to those at the end of all of this, but I'm just going to go through what was proposed and unanimously put forward by the Ordinance and Rules Committee. So if you look to the, the Town Council Rules prior to our looking at them, it was a total of 66 rules. Now, that's changed a little bit because through our work on the Ordinance and Rules, we have adopted a few new rules, and we've changed a few of the rules as well. So I'm going to go through them quickly, and obviously, questions can be asked at the end of anyone.
I'm going to ask Counsel Ringus if we can have Clerk Samino share a screen on the rules that Counsel Ringus is now presenting, please.
You see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. So just looking at the first rule, sorry. One of the things we did is there were some basic changes sometimes with grammar. A lot of the changes we made, though, were to sort of these titles of the rules. When you really read through the rules, which are in relatively plain, plain language, sometimes the way this, the rule was titled didn't necessarily match up with what was included in the rule. And I think Rule 1 is sort of a great example of that. Under the old rules, Rule 1 was the President Powers and Duties. But if you really look at it, that first thick paragraph, which is now Rule 1 under these, what's on the screen here, that is really about how a meeting starts and how it's called to order. Then there was two additional lines, which are separate paragraphs, which go more towards the powers or limitations on the President of the council. So what we did is we took old Rule 1, and we've divided it now into two rules. So Rule 1 is now the President called the meeting to order. It basically instructs us, we didn't change any language here, again, it's just a separation, but it basically just instructs on what the President does to, in essence, get the meeting started. What would happen if the President and/or Vice President weren't there? Who would preside over the meeting? Rule, rule, the new Rule 2, which is the President limitations, we didn't add any language here. We just titled it as Rule 2 and added this limitation. And basically, it just says that no president shall serve more than two consecutive two-year terms, and the President shall not serve as a chair of committee standing or special. So we, we titled this limitations basically based on the fact that this really isn't a power. It's more of sort of a limitation on what the President can do. When you continue to move down, the new, the really, the next rule was just a change in number because obviously, all the numbers henceforward are going to change because of the fact that we added in that new Rule 2. Under what is now titled Rule 4, this is sort of an interesting rule. This involves the use of a substitute chair. This is, I've ever seen instituted in a council meeting, but this would allow the President to call upon another counselor to chair the meeting or to chair part of the meeting. And there's, there's various reasons we thought of that could happen. But basically, the language was a little, a little funny on that second sentence. So we sort of cleaned that language up a little bit. So it now reads that the President may call any member to the chair, but some substitute shall not continue longer than one meeting. There was no change there. We now added in, the President may continue to express his or her opinion on any subject under debate in the presence of the substitute chair. So there was sort of a little confusion as to if the President appointed a new chairperson for that meeting or that one section of that meeting, how they would continue to sort of interact in the meeting. And we wanted to make it clear that just because they're using a substitute chair, if the President is still there, they can still opine, and they can still add to the meeting. The Rule 5, there's really no changes.
Point of order, point of order. Can whoever's microphone's not muted and you're banging around, can you please mute your microphone? Thank you. Sorry, Dave.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Rule 5 is just a change in number. We didn't really change much in terms of language, with the exception at the very end, there was some language regarding these rising votes being, we now, it now reads, shall call for a roll call vote. It just kind of, we just wanted to add that word in to sort of clear that, any sort of language up. As to what is now Rule 6 seating arrangements, again, it's just a change in, like I said, going forward, because you added a rule, all the numbers changed. There was no change in any of the language here. Again, the President continues to assign the seats of the councils as they choose. Rule, new Rule 7 is admissions to the council floor. Again, we didn't change any language there. The only thing that changed is the rule number. Rule 8, which is committee appointments, and we actually took this rule, and we kind of created sort of a new rule because it was kind of a weird situation where, again, some of these rules had titles where things are just mixed together, and they didn't match up with the title. So this is one of the ones we sort of split up. This is committee appointments, which is now Rule 8. The council president shall appoint all members of all committees of the Town Council, whether special or standing. We did add in the language that appointments are subject to Rule 2, appeals from decision of the President. Then we go to Rule.
Through the, through the chair, that's not Rule 2, that's Rule 3 now.
I'm sorry, yes, new rule, new, new rule three. So you're right, that should, that should read rule three.
Through the chair, can I ask a question about this?
Go ahead, Councilor Ryan.
So what does this mean? What has this language been, so were you saying that we can contest the chairs appointing committees?
That, if I, if I could, Madam President, respond?
Go ahead, Councilor Ringus.
In essence, yes, Councilor Ryan. That was what, that is what the discussion was at the ONR, that in essence, appeals from decision of the president, which is, like you said, new rule three, priorly rule two. That is sort of an ability for the council to question decisions of the president. In here, they did add that subject to that rule. It was never noted before whether that rule was subject to this, and the members wanted it noted here, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Going on to what is now rule nine, this was kind of, sort of blended before. And this is as to clerk and employees. I don't necessarily need to read the language on every single thing, but in essence, this is just notifying everyone, this is an existing rule already, just again, retitled and separated out, that the clerk and other offices and employees of the council work for every member of the council. Every council has the right to request the clerk or the employees of the council to perform work requested by a counselor. The president, within her duties, has the right to prioritize all work, and the president shall manage the clerk and the employees of the council. What I'll call rule ten, addressing the president and chair, again, no change to the language, it's just a change in numbering. Rule eleven is similar. Rule twelve and now rule thirteen are as to speaking decorum, and we separated it into sort of two rules, speaking decorum of members of the council and speaking decorum of the public. So again, the language itself didn't change, we just separated it out into the speaking decorum of whether you're a member of the council or whether you're a member of the public. Rule four, new rule fourteen is point of order, which obviously Councilor Ryan just used. It's the ability to sort of call attention to something. Rule fifteen, as to voting, we changed up the language here a little bit. There was some, there's always some questions on how to vote, I guess. So one of the things some of the members wanted added here was sort of what the voting could be. So we basically made sure that we listed here, you can vote any affirmative, the negative, you could abstain, or you can vote present. In terms of rule sixteen, again, it's just a change in number, no change in actual language. Rule seventeen is to tie votes. In case tie votes of any proposal, the proposal is considered lost. Rule eighteen is now division of a question. On the demand of a member, a question under consideration covering two or more points shall be divided where the question permits such a division. From there, we go into rule nineteen. We add in a little language here, just to kind of clean it up a little bit. It now reads upon demand of any member, the role, the role shall be called prior to the president slash chair reading results into the record upon any question before the council. Rule twenty is motions and procedure during debate. Again, this is something that has existed before, we're changing the number. We did add to three, we sort of altered a little bit, it now reads to end debate to slash to call for a vote. Rule twenty-one is the motion to reconsider. Prior to our sort of addressing these rules, motion to reconsider kind of fell in under sort of this sort of listing of one through whatever, which is one through eight now. We thought that during our discussions that that sort of warranted its own rule because it is sort of something that has a little bit more to it. So we sort of clarified the motions to reconsideration. Didn't really change the language at all, just separated it out into its own rule twenty-one, motion to reconsider. The new rule twenty-two, motion to lay on the table, again, no change in language, just a change in numbering. Rule twenty-three, adjournment and recessing, again, it's just basically a change in number, no change in existing language. Rule twenty-four, written proposals and resolutions. Basically, this reads that all proposed ordinances, orders and resolutions shall be in writing, every motion being reduced to writing if the president or a member of the council so directs, and no member shall be allowed to submit a written notice or resolution until he or she has read the same in his or her place or has provided the same in writing to every member of the council present. Again, any proposal or proposition seeking council endorsement of a particular course of action shall be presented in the form of a resolution. Every resolution shall be reduced to writing and shall be signed by the council presenting such resolution. A copy of the original resolution shall be provided to all the councilors prior to any vote on said resolution. Basically, this is to eliminate any confusion on what is being voted on or what is not being voted on. Anytime I believe, and I think members of the ordinance and rules believe the same, who are voting on something, we want to see it reduced to writing to see exactly the wording. And I think it just creates a safer approach as we look at various resolutions may be proposed by individual counselors. Rule twenty-five is as to personal privilege, is the right member to address the council on a question of personal privilege, and it's limited to those cases set forth in Robb's Rules of Order newly revised. There was some talk about trying to spell this out a little more, adding the Robb's Rules in, but we're all, we all know Robb's Rules and they've all been sort of distributed. Rule twenty-six, the suspension of a rule, again, it's just a change in numbering. It now reads, except as controlled by statute, any rule may be suspended by a majority vote of the council. New rule twenty-seven, there was some language changes. This is about notification of meetings. This is a longer paragraph, but basically, notification of meetings will also be posted on the town of Rancho website. The town council meeting calendar shall be reviewed and adopted within thirty days after the first council meeting of every year. I think in previous years and coming into this most recent election, there's a lot of discussion from members of the public about transparency and ensuring that everyone knows what's going on. So we wanted to make sure that notice was being provided in ways that folks now get their notice. So making sure that it was toasted on the, with the website, and that we do sort of get these meetings sort of set out was important. Rule, new rule twenty-eight is just a numbering thing, again, as to executive, as to executive session, but no change in language there, it's just a change in numbering. Rule twenty-nine is special meetings, again, no change in language, just a change in numbering. Rule thirty is on hearings. The time devoted to any public hearing at the council shall not be more than three hours, which I think we can all agree on, at any one sitting. Basically, there's a notation at the end, that five minutes shall be allowed each speaker to express, give their views on a matter being heard by the council. Additional time may be granted at discretion of the council president or the chairperson of said committee meeting. But we also added in all by majority vote of the council after a motion by any counselor. So if there was the need for additional time or the council felt that a speaker needed more time, that there could be a majority vote of the council upon a motion. Rule thirty-one is just attendance, public hearings and voting, no change in language, it's just a change in numbering. Rule thirty-two basically is the order of business, it's the agenda that we follow. Obviously, it's very important because sometimes people tune in for certain issues and they can sort of try to weigh in when they sort of tune in or when they show up to town hall and we're back in live meetings. Again, it's just a change really in numbering and some page breaking. Rule thirty-three is now agenda requests from other town departments. It's just setting out timeframes for items on the agenda, including communications and reports from the mayor, other town offices, town boards, and when that has to be submitted to the town clerk's office, and also to the clerk of the council. Obviously, Clerk Samino or any future clerk of the council has a very tough job instead of putting these meetings together and making sure things flow smoothly. And we want to make sure that adequate notice is given, not only to the town clerk's office, but also to the clerk of the council, and ensuring that our agendas can be completed in a timely fashion. Rule thirty-four is agenda requests from council members. If this member of the council wanted something added on, again, the, the language basically similar, is very similar to the one from before. We also put in some language at the, at the back. If a request cannot be on the next agenda, the council president shall specify when it will be placed on the agenda, and it will be placed at some point in the next three meetings unless an agreement between the council making the request and the council president can come to fruition.
Can I ask you a question, Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Councilor Ryan.
So, so it says, so there, there was no rule thirty-four, like, was there any language like this in the rules before?
It was, again, floating down here through the old rules. If you could, let me catch Agenda. So if you look, under the old rules, I mean, again, we've added a bunch of rules in here at this point. Under the old rules, which currently exist on the website, it was, this all fell under rule twenty-nine, which is order of business and agenda, basically listed it out. Basically, the, the way it sort of was listed was basically what we now have listed is that rule thirty-three. It's sort of, it addressed communications reports from the mayor, other town offices and town boards. There wasn't any sort of, sort of rule specifically laid in this section about requests from council members. So we sort of laid this out to sort of allow the opportunity to sort of set some sort of guidelines or specifications on how a counselor would get something placed on the agenda, and to ensure that there was some sort of discussion between that person and whoever the council president is at the time, to make sure that it does at some point get placed on the agenda.
Right. And then a follow-up, it says late items require a two-thirds vote of the members of the town council to be allowed at the council meeting. I'm not, so what, what does that mean?
That's in our, that's in our rules right now, so that's not changed.
Okay. Yeah. It was, so basically, again, Charlie, some of the stuff about like the, the end of this rule is really new language in terms of like the, the president placing something on the agenda, or I'm sorry, Councilor Ryan, about playing, placing things on the agenda. That rule was sort of copy and pasted a little bit from how other town departments and the mayor get things put on the agenda. So that, that currently exists and that wasn't really a new change. We just, again, sort of split it up a little bit here.
Thank you.
Rule, new rule thirty-five, the citizen participation at council meetings. This is about participation, obviously, by citizens at a council meeting. Again, there is sort of a, a request sort of period, again, whether it be the president or the clerk of the council, they have to have some ability to put these agendas together and know what we're expecting in terms of what can fit and what can't. We, there is some language here about speakers mutually agreeing in advance with the council president or the clerk of the council as the presentation length. In essence, if someone wanted to get an agenda item put on there, we want to sort of, again, for more for the clerk in terms of sort of managing the agenda with the president, we don't want something to be put on that we think is going to be sort of a twenty-five minute item, and all of a sudden it takes two and a half hours. So there's sort of some discussion ahead of time so that we can sort of understand what that agenda request is and how long it might take. Rule thirty-six is a change in number only, no change in language. That is to anonymous communication. Basically, unsigned communications or letters won't be introduced in the council. Again, that's just a change in numbering. New rule thirty-seven is the standing committees. Again, this just kind of lists out the committees. The one thing that we did add in here is ways and means, this basically lists out how many members are in each one. Ways and means is allowed to have four to five members. That was not noted before. So we did add in that they can have the four or the five members depending.
Can I ask you a question here, through the chair?
Go ahead, Councilor Ryan.
So on ordinance and rules, maybe we should have the same language as you have for ways and means, four to five for ways and means, and maybe consider ordinance and rules having four to five instead of limiting it to four if somebody else wanted to be on it?
I, I think that's, that we, obviously, I'm just presenting what we, what we voted on and what we discussed. That is definitely an amendment that could be, could be adjusted at some point.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that because there's been discussion in the past about the five members. When you have five members, you now have a quorum of the, of a majority of the council. So Councilor Ringus, can you just talk, did the ordinance and rules committee address that and why not move it back to four? It was moved to five in the past.
I, I, not to interrupt you, I, Madam President, I one hundred percent, I one hundred percent agree with you. I think, I believe that the ways and means got changed to five. I believe that was prior to me being on the council. I was still on the, I think I was still on the school committee at the time. And I remember it changing, and I remember my personal opinion was when you have five people in ways and means, no matter which way they vote, I brought this up at ordinance and rules, is no matter which way they vote, they now have, or most votes have one, unless it's something that needs a two-third vote, because the five, five vote on it, then it, the full council, unless somebody changes their vote, it's already sort of approved. So I've always been sort of, I guess, hesitant about the five members. That's something that's existed. Again, anything here can be changed. We just wanted to put it in that it was allowable to have the four or the five, because that's, I think, been the tradition or the history, it just, it just didn't say four. But again, I would agree with you from a personal perspective, that I've always thought the five was something that seemed a little off to me.
If history serves me correctly, and I'm going to defer to Councilor Ryan on this too, that five were added because of the interest. There was many people interested in serving on ways and means. So that's why five was put in place. I know, Councilor Ryan, I don't believe you served on ways and means, but if you can add any.
No, that sounds right. I'm gonna, so if you want to go to four, I'm going to volunteer to step down from the committee right now. That's a, that's a joke, never mind. Bad joke, I'm kidding.
Continue, Councilor Ringus.
Going to what is now rule thirty-eight, attendance of counselors at, it, so this was just a little, the language here was just confusing. So it's, it was, it used to be rule thirty-three, prior to adding other rules in, and it said attendance of counselors at committee meetings. And we sort of changed this in ONR to now read attendance of counselors at public meetings. And the reason for that is, if you look at the rule, the attendance of a counselor at a committee meeting or a meeting of another board, committee or commission, or like entity of the town, shall be in his or her capacity as the representative of his or her constituency, and shall not be counted or constituted as part of a quorum of the council unless the council is called for a convening to meeting of the council in accordance to the town charter, rules of the council, or other provisions of applicable law. So in essence, it, the rule itself talks about a counselor perhaps attending a planning board meeting to express an opinion, or attending a zoning board of appeals to express an opinion. The way it was sort of titled as committee meetings almost sort of indicated the committees that we, the smaller subcommittees we have are called committee meetings. So we just wanted to clarify that that means any, any sort of public hearing, including our committee meetings or another board of the town, which the rule itself specifies. So we just thought it was cleaner in language to say public meetings. So no change in the actual wording of the rule, just sort of a clarification into the title. Special committees, again, it's just a numbering change at this point, there's no change to the actual language. As to committee, I heard someone.
Yeah, it's Councilor O'Brien, sorry, Madam President.
I can't see everybody, so sorry if you guys, just go ahead, Councilor Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, sorry, back to thirty-eight, Vice, Vice President. I always read that as one of our committee meetings. I never read that as a public meeting. And what seems to be described here, and I guess I'm looking for direction from a, an assistant DA, what seems to be described here is in essence, an override of the, the public, open meeting law. I mean, if we're in, if we, we have a group that represents a quorum of the council and we show up and start, you know, offering our opinion, aren't we then in, I mean, unless we call on a meeting, then aren't we not in adherence of open meeting law?
Well, I, if I could, to the President, to respond to that, and obviously, I believe that solicitor Tobb is still on the line as well, but this, the way this was written, or the way that I read it and the way the other ordinance and rules members read it, this isn't about creating a, another committee meeting. This is the attendance of a counselor at a committee meeting or a meeting of another board, committee or commission or like entity of the town. So the way that we all read that was as a district counselor, for example, So the way that we all read that was as a district counselor, for example, if there was an issue where I was appearing before the planning board to advocate on behalf of a constituency, not in a position where I'm voting, where, where Dave Ringus, District Five Counselor, two years ago, was appearing at zoning, because they were trying to rezone something in District Five that a neighborhood was against. That's the way I read it, I don't read it as us creating or convening a separate subcommittee or, or sort of voting meeting.
No, we're not convening, and I'd love to have Counselor Taub, I mean, Chief of Staff Taub chime in if she's still on, because I don't see. She's not.
Wait, no, sorry, she is.
Okay, I mean, the way I, I mean, the way I'm reading this anyway, it looks to me like we're, if we're together, I mean, if we all show up to any, any of these meetings, regardless of what they are, and we're all chiming in, I, I don't know if we're in, if we would be in adherence with open meeting without convening a meeting.
Well, I want to add to that because there was recently a meeting where we were all attended and we were all reminded to be mindful of open meeting law and that when we do show up at boards, we are there as counselors, so we always have to be aware of that. And I think this rule speaks to that.
And if I could, I do think the final sort of, again, we didn't change language here, this is an existing rule, we just changed the titling, but also the end. Unless the council is called for a convening a meeting of the council and according to the town charter, rules of the council, or other provisions of applicable law. Somewhere that that sort of jumps out at me, I believe when I was on the school committee and we had a meeting regarding the East Middle School Project when it was first beginning, we did sort of a joint meeting of the town council and the school committee. Also, sometimes at annual town meeting, just using the school committee as an example, the school committee actually posts that as an open meeting because they're all going to be addressing, they have all the possibility when they're addressing the budgetary issues that they have presented to the council for approval. So I think that that is sort of, we, it is addressing and noting the fact that you do have to be careful of open meeting law and when you have to call a meeting. But again, I would defer to Chief of Staff Taub if she is on the phone.
Solicitor Taub, would you like to speak on this matter?
Certainly, Madam President. What I can offer is, and without having the language in front of me, generally what the open meeting law would prohibit is a quorum of the counselors deliberating over a matter within their jurisdiction. So the concern would be, even if, if a counselor attends a meeting like the one that was recently held, or we had a, an understanding that several individuals anticipated attending, the sheer fact that they're going on behalf of their constituents indicates that they are going in their capacity as a counselor. And so if you have a quorum of the council in attendance at, like, for example, a proposed zoning change, and the counselors find themselves commenting, that could be seen as deliberation on a matter within their jurisdiction because those types of motions eventually find themselves before the full council for consideration. So I think the, the important piece that might be absent from the distinction that this rule is trying to draw is deliberation. So counselors can attend and a quorum or majority can attend, but what they cannot do is deliberate because that's what would implicate the obligations under the open meeting law.
Thank you, Solicitor Taub. Counsel O'Brien, you good with that?
Well, I, to be frank with you, no. I mean, I think that this needs to be rewritten, all the public meetings has to be, the title has to be modified, I mean, I'm just uncomfortable with it. And, you know, I'd love to have, I trust and really rely on Counselor, I mean, Chief of Staff Taub. And I'm not questioning the committee, I'm just saying, I think this really needs to be vetted a little bit better because, you know, the, the true reading of it implies to me that if we're, if there's multiple us, and, and here's what happens, right? So I, I go to a meeting and there's multiples of us and we start to congregate, what does the, the public think we're doing? They think we are deliberating about the subject at hand and that makes me, maybe nobody else, certainly makes me feel uncomfortable as it pertains to the open meeting law. This implies that we can do it without worrying, not, I mean, I'm going to very highly, you know, generalize, without worrying about the open meeting law and I feel uncomfortable with it. So I.
So you can say that, you can add that to the amendment at the end if you'd like. It hasn't changed, I do, you know what? Go ahead, Counsel Ringus.
All right, so we can, I think there are going to be amendments presented at the end. I, I know that there's some that have already been presented in writing. So I think it's definitely something we can address at the end if we sort of note it that we're going to come back to Rule thirty eight, but get to the rest of the rules and then sort of come back around. Again, this is a very thick document and there's a chance that we may not vote on it tonight, we may have some further digestion to do, especially with some of the amendments being proposed by other counselors. So if I could, moving on to new Rule thirty nine, special committees, again, there's no change in language, just change in numbering. As to Rule, new Rule forty, which is committee meetings, we added in ten business days. It previously read ten days. And the, many, the members of the ordinance and rules were more comfortable with business days. In terms of Rule forty one, Chair quorum at committee meetings. If you read the rule, the Chair of the committee shall be the member named first, the member named second shall be the Vice Chair. A majority of the members of the committee shall constitute a quorum. So basically, the rule used to just be read, Rule thirty six, Chair quorum. It didn't really make a lot of sense, it just kind of floated out there. So we just changed the title reflecting that this rule is about committee meetings. New Rule forty two is committee reports. Again, this is no change in language, just change in numbering, this is about the committees that each of us sit on that might submit reports to the council. Rule forty three is town council action on committee reports. Again, no change in language, just a change in numbering. Rule forty four is failure to report. Again, we added the words by a committee. All of these rules that we're going through right now are sort of about some of our subcommittees. And so they just kind of, these, there was no delineation that these rules were about sort of the subcommittees. It just said rule, for whatever the previous number was, failure to report. So we just wanted to sort of delineate out that these specific rules are about committees. Again, Rule forty five, which is relieving a committee from further consideration, we added again, this is of all committees, the word a committee into the title. This is also added, it now reads, upon a motion the council made by a majority vote of the council, relieve a committee of further consideration of a matter referred to it and order the same placed on the calendar. Rule forty six, secretary to the committees, is just a change in numbering. Rule forty seven, reference to committees, again, is a change in numbering. Rule forty eight is the town solicitor. There is a, a change here. Basically, we added in, there's a, in the previous Rule forty three, town solicitor, it read, at the request of the council president, the town solicitor shall be required either in person or by deputy to attend council meetings. Any member of the council made any time, call upon, upon the town solicitor for an oral or written opinion to decide any question of law, but not to decide upon any parliamentary rules. Here, we did add in that the town solicitor may be able to give an opinion on parliamentary rules. This actually came about on a discussion with Clerk Samino. We don't have a sort of true parliamentarian that sort of attends our meetings. Occasionally, there are questions that come up as to these rules and how they're to be interpreted or to how the rules might apply to a certain situation. And we're sort of sometimes left to govern ourselves, so this just allows sort of the, a request on parliamentary procedure to be submitted to the town solicitor for an opinion. Rule forty nine is as to the town auditor, that used to be Rule forty four. Basically, there's some language added, any member of the coun, well, this is not added, this was here before, any member of the council made any time, call upon the town auditor for oral or written opinions of the financial conditions of the town, and that's where the rule used to end. We added in this request shall be in writing and approved by the council president. If rejected by the council president, it may be voted on at the next town council meeting and require two thirds vote of the council. So it basically takes away, to some degree, or limits someone just approaching the town auditor and sort of asking them to do something. Again, I think what a lot of the members of O N R wanted was transparency and the ability to track what's going on. So we added in this piece that that request for the use of the town auditor to be in writing and approved by the council president. Obviously, there's a, a veto power, if you will, that council, the councils as a whole could add a two thirds vote so to get something looked at by the auditor. So that was added language. In terms of Rule, new Rule fifty, department heads, we added through an email request through the clerk of the council, so it now reads, may at any time, call upon the department head by email request to the clerk of the council. Rule fifty one is just a change in numbering. And I believe we, it's, it read before state of federal cooperation. And when you read the rules, actually, that, I think of was just a typo, so we changed to the state or federal cooperation. Rule fifty two is permission to address the Chair. This is person, other the members of the council, looking to sort of address the Chair for, and we basically put some limitations of five minutes on it. Rule fifty three is counselor citizen sidebar. This happens occasionally, not often, but it's during a council meeting if a town council needs to step off to speak to a member of the public that's trying to get their attention, I've seen it happen from time to time. This just sort of codifies it with a number. It basically tells them that they can't be attempting to do that within sort of the purview of the council, they need to sort of go to the back of the chamber or elsewhere until that conversation is, is finished. It's about the decorum of the meeting, some of these rules.
Can I just ask you a question on this? Was there any discussion to delete this in its entirety? Where, where in me, in a meeting, should a counselor be leaving the, the seat?
Again, I think that goes to, to some degree, I, I agree, there's, there's some decorum there and sort of staying within, within the meeting itself and not separating itself from one. That is something that could definitely be a proposed amendment. I think there are, I, as, like I said, I've seen it happen, what, two or three times in my time on the council. Sometimes it's to clarify something for someone, especially if it was a proposal that was voted on, that a particular council was helping a constituent with. I know one time I had to step out to sort of explain something because I could tell when the constituent was walking away that they, by the look on their face, they didn't quite understand what had happened. So I think there are some situations where it might be appropriate. I think it's not something we should do at every single meeting and obviously it's something that could be addressed in the amendments at the end. Rule fifty four is as to the council chambers, again, just change in numbering. Rule fifty five is bylaws, et cetera, of the council. Rule fifty six is communications from the mayor. We changed the word mailed to distributed to reflect that distribution can happen in many different ways in today's day and age, not everything has to be via mail. And we put in the, and again, a change from two days to two business days. Rule fifty seven, council expression, is just a change in numbering. Rule fifty eight, notification to committee meetings, just a change in numbering. Rule fifty nine, publication, is just a change in numbering. Rule sixty, amendment and repeal is.
One's question on Rule fifty nine.
Yes.
The council shall determine the newspaper. Are we going to change that wording or does it have to be published? We're changing language on all sorts of things due to different outlets, email, all that. Is that a legal require, I mean, I know some things we have a legal notice to, but I'll ask the question, is it?
My, my understanding, and I think we did discuss this at the O N R meeting, is that on, on loan orders or ordinances of such, I believe it still is a legal requirement to be in the paper.
I see, Solicitor Taub, shocked, shaking your head, yes, so. She's saying she's agreeing with you. Okay, that places to me, hold on, Counsel O'Brien, you have a question on this one?
Well, yeah, no, so two things, let me start off, but generally speaking, that I, when I read the agenda, it looked to me like this was going to be tabled, not using the word table, but it looked to me like we weren't going to be making any decisions tonight, which I am vehemently voting for. However, separate from that, just specific to this, I provided language, I believe, like I said, I thought this was going to be not brought forward, so therefore I didn't gather the language, but I can look at it. But I provided language that says it doesn't have to be the newspaper. And it's something that I, I took off of a state-based site. But again, I'm saying that without having it in front of me, you know, being here, I don't have access as easily as I could with multiple things. But I thought I provided that, and so I think we can get around that newspaper rule, but, you know, if, if a solicitor is saying yes, then we may have to defer to her. Thank you, I'll stand down.
All right, and I just want to add, I was going to say this at the end, but it is my intention, because this is such a lengthy document and we already have several amendments that are going to come that have already been submitted, as well as additional ones tonight, that we review this tonight and table it and, and bring it up at the next meeting and any further meetings. To rush this, I think, would not do the Ordinance and Rules Committee justice for all the work that they have done, as well as all the other counselors who are seeing some of the other amendments and hearing other of the amendments. It's a lot of material for us to digest and these are our rules and the way we govern. So I, I, I hope we can table this tonight after everybody has had their say in any amendments they want to put forward and then we'll work towards approving these at a later date. Counsel Ringus, please continue.
Yes, and just before I go into Rule sixty, which I think where I'm at right now, I, as the, you know, the Chair of Ordinance and Rules, one hundred percent agree with that. There's a lot to take in here. Again, some of the changes might just be entitling, but I think it's a very important document and I'm one hundred percent on board with us sort of taking our time with this. Again, like I said at the outset, I think this is, and I think Counsel O'Brien just sort of alluded to, this is really the type of discussion that I think would have been better sort of in live chambers. I think it's just an easier thing to do when we're sort of facing each other and we can sort of shift back and forth between papers and sort of, you know, maybe something on the big screen. So this isn't probably the most ideal way, I think, to review something like this. This is where COVID has left us, this is where we're at, we had kind of put this off for a bit and I thank the rest of the council for agreeing to that suspension. But it was time to sort of start moving forward on it because we don't know how much longer all of this is going to last and I think it is important that we get these rules passed. So with that said, again, I am one hundred percent with anyone else who wants to, you know, take a little more time on this because I think it is an important document and we want to make sure we get it right. Rule sixty is amendment and repeal, again, that is just a change in numbering. Rule sixty one is parliamentary procedure. I, parliamentary is redlined, but I don't see a change from old Rule fifty five. Rule sixty two is adoption of rules. These rules will be reviewed and adopted within ninety days after the first council meeting in every even year. Rule sixty three is the authorization to sign bills. We added in that in a time-sensitive manner, the clerk of the council may sign on behalf of the council president, subject to the same restrictions that are noted above as to the Vice President author, being authorized to sign such documents. There could be a situation where something comes up, whether it be, and, and who knows what that might be? We can use COVID as an example, perhaps for some reason, myself and the council president or whoever the council president or vice president were at the time, couldn't get into sign, signing, there might be something that needs to be signed in a time-sensitive manner. So the clerk of the council could sign to ensure that sort of no time standards are missed. Rule sixty four is just a change in numbering, no change in wording. I know this next one will be one that people are going to want to address, so I'm just going to read it as we put it forward, I know that there will be some discussion on this one. This was Rule sixty five, travel conference reimbursements policy for Braintree Town Councilors. That was originally passed in council, I believe, on January fifth of two thousand sixteen, this sort of language. And at the time, it allows counselors to be reimbursed for certain expenses related to being a town counselor, up to twenty-five hundred dollars per year. As we started out this discussion, and then as we sort of finished it, COVID was upon us, and we were trying to be very mindful of the budgetary restrictions that we face, and now we know we're going to be facing going forward. So the big change here was we proposed changing that $2,500 per year to $1,000 per year. Now, again, this is for conferences and other things that a councillor may attend. By bringing it to 1,000, we're limiting that to a $9,000 expenditure. Obviously, with the 2,500, it's a time and a half higher. We thought it prudent in tough budgetary times to sort of take that down a lot. I know that some people make use of this, some people do not. The, sort of the will of our board was to drop it down. Again, I know that this is something that may have some amendments made or have some conversation around. And then, finally-
Through the chair on this matter?
Why, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, dropping that from 2,500 to 1,000. It would mean, you know, if people have, you know, conferences or training that they should go to that would improve their ability to do their job as a councillor, I think we should do that. I think, you know, to lower it to 1,000, I don't, I don't agree with that. So I would be making, I would hope we can keep it the same. Thank you.
Oh, I want to add to that because it does allow, the last sentence, should a councillor exceed this amount, they will still be able to submit a request to the full Braintree Town Council for approval. With nine of us at 2,500, that's $2,2,500 in potential expenses that are coming through. And again, I'm going to go on history. There was nine councillors who served for pretty much the same nine councillors, the majority of the new council with the new former government, and there wasn't much expenditures. So the 2,500 at nine of us is a significant expense. I know councillor O'Brien has an amendment on this that speaks to campaign funds and out-of-pocket. I think all of us have out-of-pocket expenses. I think as elected officials, that comes with the territory and the job. If you have campaign accounts, people choose to use it differently, choose to use, you know, some of these expenses, and that's everybody's right to do so. So this will come up when we get to the amendments, but I do support the $1,000 because we have that additional sentence at the end that if somebody does go over, they may do so.
So, through the chair?
Councillor Ryan?
So I think if we have a budget of nine councils times 2,500, and we don't spend that, we shouldn't ask for a budget every year of nine times 2,500. We should base it on historical spending and maybe on a three-year average. We should budget that amount. And then if we need to go back and increase it, we could do it at that time. But I've been on this council for a while, and I've seen other councillors embarrass councillors for putting in to go to conferences that make a lot of sense for people to go to. So I don't agree with this, and I'll be speaking to that when it comes time to vote on it.
Councillor Ringus, go ahead.
And then finally, so we now have here 65 rules. Those have been sort of, again, with some of the breakdowns and some additions and whatnot. Now, the old council rules had 60 rules. Rule 60 was a resolution as to town council reorganization, and that was actually passed in the council back in January 5th of 2016. We, as an Ordinance and Rules Committee, sort of made the decision to cut this rule out. And the reason that we chose to cut this rule out is, I actually remember, I remember I was, again, on the school committee when this was passed. It's not really a rule. It's a resolution, and it is written like a resolution. Every other rule in here is written in somewhat plain language. There's some legalese where needed, but it's very sort of easy to read. This old rule 60, which in the red line sort of pieces off to the right-hand side, basically was saying that in the process of the town council reorganization, there's no standing tradition of automatically elevating a vice president to a president. One can vote for whomever they want. It seems like it's, again, it's not really a rule. It's a suggestion, and I think at any point, anyone can vote whomever they want for any position they want to vote for.
Point of order.
Councillor Ryan?
So this was submitted by a town councillor that didn't like the town council president, vice president, and didn't want the town council vice president to become town council president. It's got no place in our rules.
And that's why we moved to remove it. So that's, we did, we did vote to take it out. So it didn't, it just didn't make sense to any of us because it was a suggestion rather than a rule. Again, there can be discussion on it, but the four of us decided it should be cut out. And with that, that is the entire document. I did want to thank the members of ONR and councillor Sasha, councillor Mackin, and councillor Flaherty. This was a very dense document, and like I said, it's not, it's not a very exciting stuff, but it's needed stuff. And I think all three of them were sort of new to the council at the time and jumping into something like this, and they all worked diligently upon it, and so I thank them for their work. Obviously, we came to a 4-0 vote. The document that I've just sort of gone over is a document that we're presenting. I know that there are going to be some rules here that people are going to want to discuss, and I know that already that councillor O'Brien and councillor Borica have some amendments that they have proposed in writing, so we can hear them out in the future. But I just, again, want to thank ONR for the work that they did on this document.
Thank you, councillor Ryan. As I stated earlier, thank you so much to the Committee on Ordinance and Rules for all the work on this. Also, as councillor Ringus has stated, the intention was to get these rules out sooner, and again, it was because of COVID. And there's certain things that are best served and best suited for us to deal with in person. That was the plan and the hope that we would be in person sooner. Logistically, some things are a little bit more difficult, but we are going to get through this. So what I'd like to do now, and I want to go through the amendments that were submitted in writing first, and I'm going to take those in order of how they were submitted, and then any additional council will go in order for that. And so I'm going to go to councillor O'Brien first because I believe he was the first one to submit any amendment in writing. Councillor O'Brien?
So I, I'm a little caught off guard here. So the amendment that I sent in, amendments plural, which were really discussion points and maybe some tweaking of language, I thought those went to committee. Are we saying that they, from what the chairman just said, they didn't go to committee? But I'm confused.
If I could, through the president?
Councillor Ryan, I, Ringus, sorry.
So councillor O'Brien, we, these were received, some of these questions were received. We did sort of discuss, and I guess some of these aren't necessarily amendments. They were sort of discussion points that you put up. We did review some of them. I will point to rule 59. So you presented a two-page document, councillor O'Brien, to clerk Samino that was also given to me and the other members of ONR. In terms of rule 59, I think you sort of referenced it a couple of minutes ago in terms of the newspaper stuff. And then, rule 65, I think you had an objection to the reduction from 2,500 to $1,000. We did not adopt any of the, any of these specific things that you proposed. We went forward with the document that you see, we approved the document that you see before us today, but obviously, you were allowed to make any amendments at the full council. So I think that's what we're referring to here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure for clarification that you guys-
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
So do you want to bring forth these amendments? Are you sufficient that the councillor, O'Brien, this is directed towards you, are you satisfied that the committee reviewed these and did not adopt any of the amendments as you proposed?
No, I'm not.
You're not bringing any of the amendments forward?
I'm not satisfied. I'm-
Okay. I'm going to give you the floor to add any amendment to this.
And see, that's where I was caught off guard because I don't have them in front of me except for rule 59, because the way I read the agenda, the agenda implied that it was going to be only for discussion only. So my, I'm going to, let me make an amendment. My amendment right now would be that the rules that I put forward be sent back to ONR for further consideration, at which point I personally will show up to the meeting and, you know, further discuss it as needed. But if they're going to be rejected out of hand, then, you know, basically a standstill for-
Well, I think we're, Ordinance and Rules already had your amendments, and they put forth this document. I think it's at the full council right now. So if you're not prepared tonight, I don't believe we're going to vote on it tonight. That is, that is my hope, is yours and councillor Ringus, Chair of Ordinance and Rules. So next meeting, September 15th, if you come with your amendments, everybody has been given a copy. You can have them then, bring up those discussions at that point. Is that a-
And I will apologize to everyone because I read the agenda the way I read it, which is why I was not prepared. But again, also-
You don't have to apologize.
Okay, thank you. Due to the COVID, you know, we're also kind of fumbling with papers and letters and documents. I've got my iPad here, et cetera. So, yeah, I mean, I don't want to table it unless necessary, but if others want to chime in, I'll wait and I'll table it afterwards, and then we'll come back.
Okay. So here's any amendment that we have, because I agree with you, councillor O'Brien. We have a lot of papers because this is such an important issue in our rules as stated. So any amendment, any discussion that's either been emailed or discussed tonight, if the rules that were presented to us tonight on the screen that we all received, we'll put any of these amendments under the appropriate rule in red with the councillor's name who submitted it, and when we do decide to vote, we'll go rule by rule and discuss any of those changes, and we're going to have to vote as a committee. It's going to be, like, it will be lengthy, but I think that's fair to everybody, given the situation that we're currently in. Is that okay with you, councillor O'Brien?
Madam President, I have to say that's a great idea.
Okay, all right. So that's how we're going to do it. So clerk Samino, I'm giving you a little bit more work tonight. So, anybody who makes an amendment tonight, let's be very clear because we're going to go off the recording after this to get it all in writing and transcribe it so we're all have the information prepared and in writing to us all for the next meeting. Okay, so councillor O'Brien, are you good with your discussion tonight?
So long as my, all my amendments requested go on to the original record, then yes, I am.
I guarantee you they do.
Yep, even though they're in the record now, but I, again, just fumbling, and I do support, I do support councillor Ryan on the 2,500. Thank you.
And I just want to add to that because I checked with clerk Samino while we were talking. The average, no councillor has typically gone above 700. So to answer your question, councillor O'Brien, $1,000 for every councillor really doesn't, isn't out of line with what the historical spend has been. It's usually 500 for councillors because we do have our annual meeting and things like that. Oh. I'm going to stand corrected. I'm getting new information.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, then that's fine. You can do, you could do the budget based on historical spending, but that doesn't mean we need to change the rules, our rules from 2,500 to 1,000. You can change the budget, but you don't need to change the number in the rules.
Okay. I'm going to move to councillor Baraka because she had a written amendment as well.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to propose that rule, I actually believe it's now rule 35, for citizen participation at council meetings be amended to read, and I do have this in writing, and then we can sort it out, but individuals requesting time to address the council shall make their request no later than 10:00 a.m. on the Monday preceding the council meeting. So currently, the rule reads that residents or citizens who want to participate have to have to notify the council by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday preceding the council meeting. So my intention behind this change is really to make citizen participation easier, more timely. Since agendas generally come out on Friday, I feel like asking residents to request participation prior to the agenda's publication is a little bit impractical, and then asking them to potentially wait upwards of two to three weeks to address the council on something that may now be a past issue feels like it can be a little bit futile. So I do want to reiterate all of the other components, I think, make a lot of sense. It has to be, you know, there has to be some back and forth with the council president, and it has to be submitted in writing and all of that. But I do, I do move to amend that it be 10:00 a.m. on Mondays, which allows a little over 30 hours prior to the council meeting. Thank you.
And then councillor Sasha, you also had something submitted.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually have three now, so I'll go ahead and read them all. The one that I had already submitted was, and I've modified this a bit, so I apologize, but a running list of expenditures of funds for the year by the council will be published for the town website regularly, and the list shall be updated within 30 days of the approval of any expenditure. So that would go with rule 66.
Now, councillor Ringus, were both councillor Barakas and Sasha's presented to Ordinance and Rules?
So no, councillor Barakas, we've just spoken, I think, in the last week about this. This is a new one, and obviously, I see where she's coming from. I think it's an important thing for us to discuss. Councillor Sasha, I think some of these are new. There was the, one of the things he had discussed in terms of the expenditures had been briefly sort of discussed at ONR and not approved at the time, but there was the idea that he might make an amendment at the full council, and I think these other two things are new. But he could correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes. No, that is correct. So my second one would be-
Councillor Sasha, I just have a question. So what is the purpose of putting those out on the website?
Because I think that the council should be the most transparent part of the town government, and I'm sure that if any resident wanted to know how we're spending our money, they could ask, but I just think we should be proactive and put that information out there for anybody that wants it.
Are residents asking you about this?
No.
Okay. Okay, your next one, go ahead.
This is somewhere between rule 20 or 35, depending on how you read it. At any point during discussion of an agenda item, but before a motion is made calling for a vote on the item, a motion may be made to open a public comment period, subject to approval by a majority of the council.
You have all these in writing you're going to submit to clerk Samino?
I will, yes.
I'm going to weigh in on this right now. I don't agree with that. We have public hearings that are required by law to hold public hearings. We are the elected body. The residents voted us in office to take the votes, to have the conversations, to get the feedback from them, to listen to them. We sit in these seats and have to be accountable to the residents. To open up every single vote and every single discussion we have to the public, with the legislative side of government, I strongly, I object to this, and I think we each need to be, stand by our vote and listen to the residents before we get into these meetings and take the votes. That's what we were elected to. And if people don't like the way you vote, they will tell you. And if they don't like it, they can vote you in or vote you out of office. That's how it works. But we need to be held accountable and can't open up our meetings for discussion on every single item. We will not get business of the town done. It just won't happen.
Okay. Well, I didn't know we were going to debate the amendments tonight, but I pointed out that this would require a majority of the council. So it would not be for every agenda item. It would require a majority vote of the council to open up a public comment period. So I would like to, I would like to propose it as an amendment, and if everybody else disagrees, then that's fine.
Next one?
And then the third one is that correspondence received by any councillor that is intended for distribution to the full council shall be distributed to the full council within 48 hours if received electronically, or 10 days if received in any other form.
Read that again. I didn't hear the beginning.
The correspondence received by any councillor that is intended for distribution to the full council shall be distributed to the full council within 48 hours if received electronically, or 10 days if received in any other form.
So how are you deciding what the intent is? Who makes that decision if it's only sent to one councillor?
Right. No, so only if it's addressed, so if I get, if constituents sent me an email and said, I would like you to share this with the full council, then if it was emailed within 48 hours, I should get that on to the full council. Then if it was emailed within forty-eight hours, I should get that on to the full council. That's it.
Okay. Okay, those three. Anybody else? Okay, I have a couple. Um. And Counsel Ryan corrected that. Um, on any items where we are asking that information be sent into the council, whether it be the councils, the counselors, the public, or the mayor's office. Everything in our rules as it states now says Wednesday at ten AM. We all know that has not been happening and that's not possible. However, we, and particularly Clerk Samino and the president, need to get the agenda done by Thursday and get it, it's approved on Thursday and posted Friday. So I would like to change Rule thirty-three to Thursday at ten AM because Wednesday, people aren't thinking about the meeting following week. And historically, this hasn't been, um, able to be met. So I wanna change it to Wednesday at ten, Thursday at ten on Rule thirty-three. On Rule. Agenda request from, Rule thirty-four. And I believe there's another one.
Rule thirty-five.
Rule thirty-five, yes. Thank you, Counsel Ringus. Uh, and on Rule thirty-seven, as I mentioned earlier, the standing committees, I'd like those, uh, the ways and means to be moved down to four, for the reasons I discussed earlier. Um. Rule fifty-nine, Counsel O'Brien addressed that. And that is it for me. Any other counsel, have any other?
Madam President?
Counsel Ryan.
So let me just go through quickly, um. Think what we had, um, on Rule thirty, where it says additional time may be granted at the discretion of the council president, president or the chairperson, or by a majority vote. I think we may wanna think of, um, a two-thirds vote, where we're adding this language, a majority vote. Since we're changing the rules, maybe want, we wanna err on the side of caution and say a major, uh, two-thirds vote. And I think we also put that in, um. Forty-five, where we say, um, a majority vote of five, well, that's really just changing it from five members. So maybe that's not the same appropriation there, appropriateness there. And then again, um, I I don't think we should change the dollar figure in Rule sixty-five from twenty-five hundred to a thousand, so I'd be speaking against that too. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so what I'd like to do, if everybody's in agreement, we do not vote on this. As I stated, we'll get all these amendments incorporated into the document you see before us on the screen. Have that sent out to everybody. We'll take it up at our next meeting, which is September fifteenth. If at that time, everybody is comfortable, we'll, we'll vote. There'll be more discussion that night and weighing in on all these. Uh, if it's the will of the committee, we vote, we vote. If it's not, we won't, and we'll continue the discussion. Everybody in agreement on that? All right, do I have a motion to table this?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion to table, uh, item zero, zero, two, two, zero, the council, uh, town council rules. Motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call please, to table to September fifteenth.
Counsel Barrika.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume. Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino, that is unanimous. Moving on to new business, item two, zero, zero, five, six, the town clerk call of the state general election for November third, twenty twenty, or take of any action relative thereto. This is a placeholder for a vote at our next meeting, so no action is required tonight. Item, next item, two, zero, zero, five, seven, the town clerk designation of early voting site, dates, times for state general election, or take of any action relative thereto. This is a placeholder for a vote on September fifteenth. No action is required on this item as well, we are simply placeholders. Uh, okay, and with that, we have, uh, new business. I know you all received a resolution from Counsel Mackin. Because this did not get submitted in time for the agenda, this does require a majority vote of the council to have it presented tonight. So Clerk Samino, if you could. And I'm fumbling my paperwork here. Mayor with me. On item zero, three, two, two, zero. The resolution to decree that the Braintree Fire Department is allowed to fly the thin blue line flag for as long as it desires. Can we have a roll call vote to bring this into our meeting tonight?
Is this to, uh, for same night action?
No, because it was not on the agenda, we need to have a two-thirds majority of vote to take it up tonight. So you could do a roll call. So you're voting in favor to have this presented tonight. If anybody objects to same night action, they can do so after. It's, if, if it gets on to the agenda. Is that the correct order?
Yes, yep, that's appropriate. Counsel Barrika.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin. Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
With that, I will turn it over to, uh, Counsel Mackin. If it, if anybody does, if it comes to a point where there's action on this matter and anybody objects to same night action, it's just one. Counsel, if they object, we do not move forward. Counsel Mackin.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I know I was late submitting this and I thank you for letting, um, letting me still present it. Um, I'm gonna, I know you all have a copy of it, but I'm gonna read the resolution and then I'm gonna read a statement I wrote explaining it. And then, um, you know, I'd welcome anyone else's opinion as well. Resolution reads, whereas the town of Braintree does not have any policies or ordinances prohibiting the display of the memorial flags on fire trucks, whereas the thin blue line has been a conventionally accepted law enforcement memorial marker or symbol for over a hundred years. In words, the town of Braintree not only stands in solidarity with our neighbor Weymouth in memorial of the tragic murder of Officer Michael Chesno, but also stands in the honoring of our own line of duty losses of Lieutenant Gregory Principi and Sergeant Ernest across, and such losses across the Commonwealth. This resolution still mandate and decree that the Braintree Fire Department be allowed to fly the thin blue line flag for as long as they so choose for these purposes. Um, thank you, and I'd like to make a statement regarding this resolution.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam President. As we all know, uh, weeks ago, the mayor and the fire chief received a letter asking for the thin blue line memorial flags to be removed from the fire trucks. The reason given for this request is that some people may find the flags to be offensive, racist, and used to counter the B L M movement. The thin blue line flag, by definition, is memorial symbol for officers who've lost their lives in the line of duty. It represents their courage and sacrifice while protecting their community as existed for decades prior to the B L M movement. Unfortunately, some people have arbitrarily started to assign it a different meaning. This alternative perception of the flag does not change its original intent or what it symbolizes. The fire department has historically flown these flags at various times in a show of solidarity to their brothers and sisters of the B P D. It is not a permanent display. Forcing the fire department to permanently remove the flags would mean they can never be flown again. It would be taking away their ability to honor and respect a fallen police officer, someone part of the fire family. Everyone has a right to their own opinion and belief. That being said, one opinion or belief should not result in the cancellation of another. Recently, the school committee voted to remove the Wamf symbol as the B H S mascot, returning it to its tribe of origin. While many were sad and upset to have their connection and use of this symbol severed, it was deemed by majority to honor and respect the wishes of the tribe it represented. This vote of action by the school committee set down a precedent to return the meaning and symbol of the thin blue line flag to our police. As many of you are aware, I'm the son of a police officer. The danger faced by police officers and other first responders does extend to their families. To help you understand what it's like to grow up in the home of a police officer, I would like to share with you just one of the many stories during my father's career. My father was on duty when the bombs went off during the Boston Marathon. He called us to say he was responding and, like many other officers, rushed into danger in the unknown. For hours, I sat with my mother and my sisters and waited, not knowing what the next phone call was gonna be. Several nights later, the terrorists struck again. My father was the first responder to the murder of Officer Sean Collier, a young man that he was friends with. My family was fortunate to avoid tragedy that night. The lives of Officer Collier, Collier's families were shattered. While at the murder scene, a call came in, the terrorists had been spotted. And without hesitation, he responded to that call as well. As terrorists and Zarnaya proceeded to throw explosives out the window at the pursuing officers, my father was there when the gun battle ensued. The situation, as you can imagine, is very difficult to picture your father being in. It makes me proud to say he was awarded a Medal of Valor for his actions that night. Our police officers go to work each day with the goal of getting home safely with their families at the end of their shift. Our firefighters also have an extremely dangerous job. These men and women have chosen to stand in solidarity with their fellow first responders, their brothers and sisters, and they should not be prevented from doing so. I spoke with another council yesterday who intends to file amendments to this resolution. The amendments involve taking the flags out the fire trucks and instead placing them in alternative piece of town property. I disagree with these for several reasons. First, the objections to the flags on the fire trucks were oppositions to the flag itself, as well of the flying of flags of town property. These amendments do not address either of these concerns, as the flags would still be flown and on town property. More importantly, is the free speech implications dictating what can be said and where. If a council wishes to file their own resolution, I encourage them to do so, but I respectfully request that this one be allowed to proceed to a vote unamended. Additionally, I am requesting that we take a same night vote on this matter. We have seen this issue rapidly escalate, to the point that our fire chief and the town council have been threatened and told, you're going down and we'll burn in hell. Prolonging this decision another two weeks will only let the tension surrounding it continue to build. As leaders, as leaders in this town, we need to make a decision on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any counsel object to same night action? Counsel Flaherty, I see you have your hand up.
I don't object to same night action.
Okay, does any, I'll get, did you wanna make a comment? Let me see, does any counsel object to same night action? Seeing none, okay, Counsel Flaherty, go ahead.
Um. Well, first of all, let me say that I don't believe in blocking a counselor's, um, desired at piece on a, on a, on an agenda. So I voted to add this today because I think every counselor has the right to bring something forward if they wish. But this kind of issue is one that I think is best for local government to avoid. Uh, the reason that we are meant to be a nonpartisan body is to prevent the discord generated by issues like this from burdening our local government process with the same political polarization that characterizes our national government. I mean, at the national level right now, it's very hard to get things done because everyone hates everyone. But here in Braintree, where we literally live with the people that we are governing, the animosity affects our lives in a much more personal way. I don't like to see neighbor pitted against neighbor, and I think we're all feeling it. So I hope today, we can come up with some kind of solution that will bring us together instead of further dividing us. The council has received numerous letters on this issue at this point. Many of them describe an admirable wish to honor our police officers and a powerful conviction that the thin blue line flag is a meaningful way to do that, and a fervent hope that it can be, that it can continue to be displayed. Today, a letter was delivered to the council that is signed by a hundred and fifty-three Braintree residents. And I'm going to read that letter into the record now.
Can I stop you right there? Because it was a petition, Clerk Samino and Nicole Tom. So there's rules that are specific to the petition. Can this be introduced tonight? Was it a valid petition? Uh, solicitor, do you get, that might, it was late in the day, might not have been sent?
I, I have, Madam President, I have not seen the petition. Or, nor had I seen the resolution until this evening. So I don't have the details on the petition or what, how, or whether or not it should be appropriately introduced. I mean, certainly, anything can be read as, as communication from constituents, but whether it's a formal petition or not, I'm not prepared to comment.
Okay, okay. So Counsel Flaherty, why don't you just read it as a letter and, cuz there are rules to a petition that we have to abide by?
That is fine. I, I only intended to read the text of the letter anyway.
Go ahead.
Um, we are writing to you today in opposition to the decision of the Braintree Fire Department to fly the thin blue line flag from its fire engines. The first responsibility of our fire department is the safety of all Braintree residents. But the impact of that flag is that it makes some people feel more safe than others. It is not lost on us that both our firefighters and our police officers put on their uniforms and go to work each day to keep our families safe. On a good day, the jobs are difficult. On a bad day, they are dangerous. And on a really bad day, they can be deadly. Lives lost in line of duty deserve to be remembered with solemn reverence, but employing a symbol that has been dragged into the national limelight in white supremacist rallies and in direct opposition to Black Lives Matter cheapens the sanctity of the memorial that fallen heroes deserve. Now is the time for us to find a better way to honor our police for the work that they do and the sacrifices they make. Here is an opportunity for Braintree to come together to lead the way towards finding a more meaningful and appropriate way to honor fallen officers. Remove the flag and let's begin a conversation about how Braintree can pay tribute to their memory in a way that doesn't come at the expense of anyone. Thank you for your time and consideration. So those are the two sides that we've heard from. And although on the surface, they give the impression of a really polarized attitude on the subject, I actually think there's common ground to be found. What they are both expressing is a desire to find a way to honor our police, and especially those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. What they don't agree on is what the thin blue line flag means as a symbol. Everyone agrees that at its inception, the symbol was clearly a gesture of respect for police. Since then, it has been used sometimes in really inappropriate ways. Some would say despicable ways. And the result of that is that the flag no longer seems to be as an, to some, as an authentic statement of support for police. And those individuals are very critical of the alternative message they feel it conveys. So there's agreement on the goal, which is to honor police, and agreement on what the thin blue line flag meant at its inception, but disagreement on what its message delivers today. So given that, I think the solution lies in clarifying the message of the flag. And this can be done by placing it more clearly in context. Sometimes context is everything. I have three distinct ideas on how that can be done. And in each case, the flag is removed from the fire truck. But also, in each case, the flag continues to be flown on display in Braintree, paired with a police memorial, so that its meaning becomes unambiguous as a solemn gesture of respect for police and far less open to being misconstrued in any other way. So to that end, I move to amend the motion on the table with the following language.
Um. Just for point of clarification, Clerk Samino, we have a motion with, I don't believe there was a second. So we, so I, I take full responsibility. We should have had a second before we entertained any discussion, so my apologies. Is there a second?
I'll second. Uh, we don't, I mean, are we, are you talking, so?
Second for the purpose of discussion for Counsel Mackin's motion on his resolution. Okay, now, count, thank you, Counsel Ringus. Again, my apologies, my fault. Um, Counsel Flaherty, go ahead. So you wanna, so we have a motion on the floor, you wanna make an amendment to the motion?
Right. I, I move to amend the motion on the table with, uh, the following language. And I'm wondering if, um, Clerk Samino can share my screen right now, so that everybody can see the. And I'm wondering if Clerk Semino can share my screen right now, so that everybody can see the text.
Did Counselor Mackin actually make a motion, or did he just read that into the record?
I had asked, Clerk Semino, he did make a motion, right? Or did you just start with whereas?
Um, I think I just started with whereas. So can I go back and make a motion for that resolution?
Okay. Yeah, we need to go back. The motion, your resolution.
Can I make a motion for the approval of my resolution?
Counselor Ringus?
Second.
You want to second it? Now, purpose of discussion. Sorry for the confusion on my end. Can I just ask, Solicitor Tabby, while you're here with us, is that okay? Follow online with how we just did that? Do we need to talk about the resolution? Read it back into the record?
I don't believe you need to read it back into the record. I think it's clear that it's a motion to approve the resolution previously read into the record by the council.
Okay, great. Okay, Counselor Flaherty, back to you.
So if Clerk Semino can share my screen, so that people can read what I'm showing you, because I know it needs to be presented in writing. And I can't deliver.
I'm sorry, Counselor Flaherty, I made you co-host, so you can share. If you want, I can share. I can share the rev. one. Is that what you'd like for me to share?
So do I click Share? No.
Your screen down the bottom.
Yeah. And I click Share. Who can share? Only host, all participants.
He made you a co-host, so you can.
I can share it. I just have to pull it up. It'll just take a minute, if you want me to do that.
I clicked something, and I just think it says, "Share your entire screen." Does that work? Oh, it says I'm sharing. Okay. So, "A resolution in support of honoring police officers with the Thin Blue Line flag. Whereas, the Braintree Town Council wishes to honor our police officers for their hard work, bravery, and sacrifice with a display of the Thin Blue Line flag. And, whereas, the town of Braintree prides itself on being a community of inclusion, where respect is extended for the dignity and worth of all our residents regardless of race or origin. And, in recognition of the recent history of misuse of the Thin Blue Line flag in demonstrations of white supremacy, or otherwise, as a divisive tool of political partisanship. And, whereas, the Braintree Town Council does not wish for the meaning of this flag to be misconstrued as representative of anything other than a solemn gesture of reverence for the sacrifices our police officers make on our behalf, and especially for those who have fallen in the line of duty. Be it therefore resolved that the Thin Blue Line flag will be respectfully removed from the Braintree fire truck, to be raised to fly in perpetuity over the police memorial dedicated to the honor of Lieutenant Gregory Allen Principi and Sergeant Ernest James Decross, that their lives and sacrifices will not be lost to memory. Be it further resolved that the Braintree Town Council supports funding to properly restore and improve this memorial for posterity." So, just as a little bit of clarification, you can... So this memorial, I think, is not known by everybody in Braintree. It's a plaque that is placed on the side of the bridge that separates South Braintree Square from the area down where Chili's is and Shaw's. So there's a bridge there for the T, and along it, there's a big mural of kindergarten pictures. So on the South Braintree Square side of that, there is a plaque, which looks... Let's see if I can share with you. It looks like that.
Counselor Flaherty, I don't think we're getting your photo.
Yeah.
I see it.
Maybe it's me then. So, "The Bridge in Memory of Lieutenant Gregory A. Principi, Sergeant Ernest J. Decross, Braintree Police Department. They will be remembered not for the way they died, but for how they lived and served our community." So that is a police memorial that we already have in Braintree. It looks like it might need a little sprucing up, to be honest with you, which is why I added the text about supporting the funding for that. But there, we could, you know, add the flag to that plaque, and then it's placed directly in unambiguous context as a police memorial, as a gesture meant to amplify the memorial of police, which is already there. And I think that, although, you know, this is an emotional... This is an emotional issue with people on opposite ends of a spectrum. I think that this is a way to clarify the meaning that could be a reasonable compromise that a lot of people could live with and feel good about, and that could bring Braintree together.
Second. Okay, so there is a motion made by Counselor Flaherty on an amendment to the main motion. There's an amendment to the motion made by Counselor Flaherty, a second to the amendment by Counselor Barica. We need to vote on this. Any further discussion on the amendment as presented?
I can't find the raised hand, so I'm just raising my hand.
Okay. Counselor O'Brien.
Thank you very much. Well, I do honor and respect anyone that puts a badge on and protects us, without a doubt, unequivocally. And I've attended many a memorial, many sign-ins, many things, and I'm honored to do that. As it relates to this item, I have to read the following into record, because I will be voting accordingly.
Is this specifically to the amendment on the table, Counselor O'Brien?
It's specific to all amendments and everything we're voting on tonight. According to, in accordance with the U.S. Flag Code, it specifically states, "The flag should never have placed upon it, nor any part of it, nor attached to it, any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature." I will vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Brien. Anybody else? All right, Clerk Semino, I roll call.
Counselor Ryan.
The raise hand feature's not working.
Doesn't seem like it's working.
You know what? We got it. So if we could take Counselor Flaherty off a co-host, maybe that's the issue. Counselor Ringus, go ahead. Then I see Counselor Connor. Did you have your hand raised, or were you just testing it? Okay.
I was pointing, I think Counselor Ryan was ahead of me. I was pointing.
Oh, sorry.
Be my guest. Go ahead.
Counselor Ringus, thank Counselor Ryan and Connors. Go ahead.
I think this has become a big issue in town. Become a big issue in our state, this has become a big issue in our country. I appreciate, I've talked to many people over the last few days, the last few weeks. I appreciate the work that Counselor Flaherty put in to her various amendments, and I think each and every one of her amendments, it has some weight to it. And I think it's important to recognize, you know, Lieutenant Principi and Sergeant Decross, they were officers, for those who don't know, who in the line of duty, lost their lives in Braintree. There's now Memorial Scholarship at Braintree High that's given out every year in their honor. I was lucky enough to receive that when I was going off to school to major in criminal justice. Their family is still around. They were great officers, and I think it's one of the earliest memories I have of going up to outside of St. Francis with my dad and my mom and seeing this wall of blue, of these people, of all of these offices from all over the state, gathering up to honor these two fallen officers. So I do appreciate the amendment to sort of spruce up that area. A lot of people don't even know that plaque is there. I also know a constituent reached out to us about a similar sort of proposal, and I do think that it's something that we should look at. I know there's some other amendments you're going to make, so I don't want to jump on those amendments ahead of you. But as a whole, I do think that this is something that we have to really look at. And I know that it's a very highly divisive issue in town. And unfortunately, we are dealing, as we come out of this crazy time that is COVID, we're dealing with a lot of highly divisive issues in town. We have seen people debate and scream at each other and attack each other, both in person and on social media, about whether or not COVID is real or not. We've seen people attack each other and go after each other on imagery associated with the WAMP symbol. And we've seen, in recent weeks, people go after each other and attack each other in regards to what the best back-to-school plan is. And I think a lot of this has to do with people having been inside for so long and removed from normal life for so long, that we've had a lot of time to think, a lot of time to sort of push things forward that maybe were under the surface, and a lot of that is now erupting up. So I'm cognizant of both sides of this issue. The things I wanted to note before I actually kind of go further is, one, this is a resolution. It doesn't have really any sort of binding power. This is more a statement from us, as to the council's prerogative on something. You know, anything that would require an expenditure of funds through a resolution is going to have to go through ways and means. Some of the things that we might discuss, you know, whatever side of the issue of the Thin Blue Line flag you're on, this resolution by the council doesn't necessarily take, change who actually is in charge of that, and what purview, what department is in charge of what flies or where it flies. And technically, it doesn't really fall under us. So it really is just theater. It's a statement. But I understand it's an important statement, and I think it's one that we need to make because of all the conversation, discussion, debate, and sort of vitriol that's gone back and forth between both sides on this. People are going to vote different ways tonight. And I hope that at whatever way we all vote, that we respect each other, and that folks in town respect each other, because I think this is a highly divided issue. I've said that a couple of times now. We have a petition that we received today that was sort of just read into the record. We have received, listen, I was on the school committee for 10 years, and I've been on the council for, going into this, my third year on the council. I don't think I've ever received as many emails about one issue as I have on this. We had hundreds of emails in support of flying the Thin Blue Line flag on the back of the fire trucks, or passing a resolution that we acknowledge that it should fly there, I guess would be the wording. And then we've had numerous emails in recent days come in to sort of counter that. So it is sort of a highly divided issue, and I think Counselor Flaherty put it correctly in that we need to educate folks, and we need to be open, and we have to have some healthy discussions in town. But I think one of the reasons I wanted to see this sort of move forward tonight is there's a lot we have to focus on in this town. We have to get our kids back to school in a healthy way. We have to make sure that our small businesses that are suffering get the help they need. And we also...
Can I just ask you to stay focused on the motion and the amendment?
So, all right, I went off a little bit, but I guess the last thing I'll say...
I appreciate your input.
Yeah. I think we just need to ensure that we recognize that this, not everyone's going to be happy whichever way you vote. So I guess specifically as to the amendment, and it's specific to the resolution, I think it's one conversation, is officers have requested that this be there. We've seen other communities take it off. The firefighters have requested that this be there. It's a flag that means a lot to them. We applauded our officers on September 11th, and we honored them when they ran into those buildings, and so many of them lost their lives. Counselor Mackin spoke to the Boston Marathon bombing, when these officers engaged in this big game of hide-and-seek to bring these two to justice. Individually, we've probably all had situations where officers were there for us, whether it be a car, something as simple as locking your keys in the car, or breaking down in the highway, to something more serious, like someone in your family being ill, or being involved in some sort of domestic situation. So our officers are consistently there to protect and serve us. And for whatever reason, in recent weeks, in recent months, we've seen them attacked. And I know that this, that not every single individual that puts on a badge deserves to put on that badge. That's something we obviously can't be naive about, and something we have to acknowledge. But our offices in Braintree especially, they protect us. They serve us. And we have to be able to honor them. This is a testament to fallen officers. We've seen locally, in recent years, the tragedies that can befall our officers. I spoke already of Lieutenant Principi and Sergeant Decross. We've seen next door, our neighboring Waymouth, Sergeant Chesna, who was cut down. He has a family, a wife who is a Braintree native, two children, who don't get to play catch with their dad again, and never will again, that won't be there for high school graduations, and won't be there to walk either of his children down the aisle. He won't be at those events going forward. Here in Braintree, you know, May 5th, we're kind of living in for me here, because a few years back, Officer Delaney was put in a situation where if a bullet had gone a quarter of an inch the other way, we would have been holding in a funeral for an officer here. So I think our offices have consistently been a part of the fabric of our community. They're involved in our schools. They come to luncheons. They have such a great relationship that was set up between the superintendent and the chief, that officers sort of visit the elementary schools, just on sort of a daily basis. I know that some have tried to co-opt this flag, and I think it's important for us to say that it's not an image that we're going to allow to be co-opted, that we're going to stand strong. This is a flag, a symbol, that goes back well, well before my lifetime, and maybe has come into the spotlight in more recent years. But certain groups have tried to co-opt it, and I think it's important for us to say, no, you can't have it. It's going to remember our offices, it's going to respect our offices, it's going to honor our offices, and it's going to honor the offices that have lost their lives and the commitment of these offices to our communities. So with that said, although I am mindful that sprucing up that area of town in terms of Lieutenant Principi, Sergeant Decross area is important, and perhaps something that could propose as an additional resolution, or something that we can look at additionally, I think the heart of this matter today, and I appreciate Counselor Flaherty, your call yesterday, because I had a lot of thinking to do on that. But I think the resolution here, the amendment that you propose isn't necessarily an amendment as much as a new resolution, in a way. But I appreciate what you're trying to do, because I think you're trying to find a way to sort of find a happy medium. And I think truly, the truth usually does fall in the middle, or the answer is generally in the middle. But it's such a change from the resolution that Counselor Mackin has proposed that I can't support it, because it really is a completely different resolution. And I do think that Counselor Mackin has some important things that he wants to be addressed for himself, but for the townspeople that have contacted him, but also our police and our fire. So I won't be supportive of the amendment tonight. But I do appreciate the work that you put in.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus. Okay, next was Counselor Ryan.
I'm all set, Madam President.
Okay. Counselor Connors.
So I think Dave, or Counselor Ringus, put it very well as far as the dedication that our officers have had to this town, and the request that they are making to fly it where they want to fly the flag. And I am in agreement with the fact that the amendment is too much of a new resolution to be made, and I will not be voting in favor of this as well.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Counselor Barica.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to the prior speakers as well. I and many of the residents, excuse me, I've spoken with, are dismayed and frustrated and saddened that a symbol whose origins were meant as a solemn tribute to fallen officers, including those who tragically died by suicide, is now seen as a divisive political symbol. It should be distressing to all of us that this symbol has been co-opted and misappropriated by hate groups and extremists, groups that in no way represent our residents, our local government, or our dedicated public servants. As Mayor Kokoros eloquently reminded us back in June, and I will echo him now, quote... quote, "When any of our residents feel threatened, unsafe, or devalued, it concerns us all." We have received letters and I have received phone calls from residents who feel threatened, unsafe, and devalued. So yes, I am concerned. I have proudly voted in support of the Police and Firefighter Union contracts, the Police and Firefighter overtime budgets, the Police and Fire Department's capital projects, and to fully fund these departments. My votes on the council speak for themselves and should reassure residents and public safety officials of my steadfast commitment to support the women and men who selflessly serve to protect us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. Their sacrifice on our behalf cannot be overstated. In addition to providing the Police and Fire Departments with the resources they need to do their jobs, there are so many ways we can and should honor our public servants. Among them, we need to let concerned residents know of all the proven and progressive policies that the Braintree Police Department already has in place, policies which put the sanctity of human life above all else. For concerned residents, let me provide you with a few examples, all of which are championed by Campaign Zero, an organization that seeks to improve community interactions with police. The Braintree Police Department long ago adopted the eight can't wait, eight use-of-force policies that provide strong protection for civilians. The Braintree Police Department has been a leader in the Commonwealth by adopting and also becoming a training center for the One Mind Campaign, a nationwide initiative to ensure successful interactions between police officers and those affected by mental illness. Additionally, the BPD has a social worker embedded with the department to assist with mental health crises. The Braintree Police Department has a policy in place to ensure appropriate, respectful, and professional interaction with the transgender and LGBTQ communities. We should be proud that our police department is ahead of the curve on so many issues that have plagued departments around the country. Let us honor that by shouting from the rooftops about the good work our women and men in blue do every single day. This is not a simple issue. For many, the flag has become a divisive, political, and partisan symbol, one which is now flying from a publicly funded vehicle. To many others, the flag is a meaningful memorial to honor the undisputable sacrifices of our police officers. By reverently removing the flag from the fire truck and placing it within the context of a police officer memorial, its meaning is clarified and serves its purpose of solemn remembrance. I hope that Council Flaherty's thoughtful and well-thought-out resolution can be adopted tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baraka. Council Shashi, your hand up next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I have some comments on Council Mackin's proposal, but as far as the amendment before us, this does fundamentally change Council Mackin's resolution to the point where it almost is doing the complete opposite by removing the flag from the fire truck in the short term in exchange for placing it somewhere else that isn't yet designed or kept up. We are completely, this amendment would completely flip the Resolution 180. So I think my intent is to vote on Council Mackin's resolution, and I think this amendment goes too far, and I will not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ryan, I see you with your hand raised.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we can put Council Flaherty's amendment back up on the screen because I wanted to talk about it, please.
I can do that.
So, "Whereas the Braintree Town Council wishes to honor our police officers for their hard work, bravery, and sacrifice with the display of the thin blue line flag."
It's the first line.
I agree with that. "Whereas the town of Braintree prides itself on being a community of inclusion where respect is extended for the dignity and worth of all our residents regardless of race or origin," and I agree with that. "In recognition with the recent history of misuse of the thin blue line flag and demonstrations of white supremacy or otherwise as devices to a political partisanship," I agree with that. "Whereas the Braintree Town Council does not wish for the meaning of this flag to be misconstrued as a representative of anything other than the solemn gesture of reverence for the sacrifices of our police officers make on our behalf and especially for those who are fallen in the line of duty." 100% I agree with that. I think maybe everybody's, a lot of people do agree with everything so far. "Be it therefore resolved that the thin blue line flag will respectfully be removed from the Braintree Fire Truck to be raised to fly in perpetuity over the police memorial dedication to the honor of Lieutenant Gregory Allen Preseep, and I'm not saying that wrong, Sergeant Ernest James Decrosse, and the lives and sacrifices will not be lost to our memory. Be it further resolved that the Braintree Town Council supports funding to properly restore and improve this memorial for prosperity." So what I would want to take out is that where it says, "Be it therefore resolved that the thin blue line flag will be," and take out the words, respectfully removed from the Braintree Fire Truck and have it raised and fly in perpetuity. So there's a lot of good stuff, I think, that is in this resolution. It's just the part about taking them off the fire trucks that I can't support right now, but I want to commend Council Flaherty for making a lot of points in this resolution that I think are important, where we don't want it, we're not supporting the thin blue flag for what other people are trying to make it mean. We're supporting the thin blue line flag for what it does, what it should mean, and that's to honor our police. And so I just, the little part about taking it off the fire trucks is, I don't know if we can amend that and take that out. I'm not going to do it unless, I don't want to be the only one that wants to do it, but I agree with what a lot of what Julia Flaherty has said in this resolution. It's just the part about taking them off the fire trucks that I would like to see taken out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ryan. If you want to make that as an amendment after we address the current amendment, you may do so. I just have a couple of comments. All the councils, what I've seen and heard and the ones I've spoken to, you know, over the years and recently, we all support our police and our fire department 100%. There's no question about that. I just want to reiterate to the public, we as a council do not have the authority to remove the flag. That authority solely lies in the mayor's office, and the mayor's office has already come out publicly and said he is not removing the flag. So we do not have that authority to do that. I'll make an amendment to Council Mackin's motion later to reflect that. There's some language in there that we don't have the authority to do that. We've received, as has been stated, I agree with the previous speakers, we've received hundreds and hundreds of emails on both sides of this. There's also been a great deal of discussion on social media. And a lot of it's very negative and very hateful. I think we can all agree to disagree on any topic that's put out there. And it's, conversations need to take place and be respectful of one another. And I'm glad to see we here as the council can do this. And I hope residents who are on both sides of this not being very respectful and being very hateful. It's very disappointing. It is. We're better than this. This town is better than this. The flag, what the flag means to me, it is to support our men and women of the police and the fallen officers. And specifically, we, very close to home, I lived in Braintree when Lieutenant Principi and Sergeant Decross died in the line of duty. You remember where you were the day that happened and how it came across. There was no social media. You heard it on the radio. You heard it on the TV. We all received a letter from Lieutenant Principi's widow. You know, I sent something to her in her response, like it was, it's heartbreaking what the families of our fallen officers go through. We had Sergeant Chesna Braintree, I believe he was promoted posthumously to a sergeant from officer. Was it sergeant or lieutenant? I apologize if I have that incorrect. But I've spoken to the fire chiefs and firefighters, and the flag to them means they're honoring the men and women who have lost. They haven't shown any other meaning. They haven't displayed any other meaning. It is a true symbol of support and solidarity for the men and women who have lost their lives in the memorial. There can be meanings brought forward on any issue, different meanings. That's not the meaning that I perceive it is. That's not the meaning that the fire department has brought forward and feels it is with their display of the flag. So I do agree with the previous speaker, Council Flaherty. I commend you for all that. I do, if there's an amendment that comes forward, as Council Ryan suggested, removing those last two, I will fully support that. I'm going to support Council Mackin's resolution with an amendment, as I said, because we don't have the authority. So for us to do a resolution, say that we mandate something, it's not within our authority. I just think we need to change that wording, fully support it. This issue is created to divide in this community. And I hope we can all come together because we should all come together because COVID has brought forth something we have never, ever dealt with. And as a previous speaker said, I think tempers are really heightened above normal because of this. It's not normal for us all to be home. It's not normal for us to not see each other and be in a work environment and be able to shake someone's hand or give them a hug or go to a wake and pay your respects. It's just not normal life. And so things just, I think people are acting like they normally wouldn't act. And I just ask the public, when you sit behind a keyboard, you think before you type that, whatever it may be and whatever issue. And if you would say that to somebody's face, you go ahead and hit enter and you put that message out there, whatever it may be. But on this issue, I'm going to honor our fallen. I'm going to support this. And with that, if Clerk Samino, if you could do a roll call vote on the-
Madam Chairman, I'm going to amend, I'm going to amend the amendment to take out the language about taking the flags off the fire trucks because I think Council Flaherty has hit a lot of good points. And we are intending this flag to be flown to honor our police officers. So just take out the words about it not flying on the trucks. That's my amendment. A few words. Because I agree with having it fly at the police memorial.
Point of order.
We have to deal with the amendment, we have to vote on the amendment to either accept or do that. Then we'll come back and do your amendment, Council Ryan.
I don't agree with that. I think I can amend an amendment. So that's my opinion.
I can have solicitor top. I'm going to ask you.
Madam Chair, could I make a comment? I just feel like at this point, the language is getting very bogged down. Because, again, I appreciate what Council Flaherty did. I do. I don't see Council Flaherty's proposal as an amendment. I see it as a brand-new, I look at it as a brand-new resolution because the wording is completely different. So I understand that many of those paragraphs, like Council Ryan outlined, again, I agreed with them with the exception of taking the flag off of the trucks. But while you amend that, then we lose Council Mackin's resolution because it's, in essence, her amendment supersedes Council Mackin's whole resolution. So I think the better way would be to vote on her amendment. And then if we wanted to add in some of her language into Council Mackin's resolution, that might be the better way and the cleaner way to do it, just so everyone knows what they're voting on.
Council Ryan? Do you want your amendment on the table?
Well, it's just, it's just, it's just- It's just tough making these decisions, you know. You know, here and now, it would have been nice to have all this stuff in advance. I'll withdraw my amendment. And I just think that Council Flaherty brought up some very good points about what we're trying to do here tonight. And we're trying to do this in a positive way to honor our police officers. And that's the spirit that I will be voting for tonight. So I withdraw my amendment to the amendment.
So we have Council Mackin's motion on the table, amended by Council Flaherty. We are voting on the amendment of the motion. It's been seconded by Council Baraka. Council Shashi, is your hand up or no?
Sorry, Madam President, yes. Would it be possible for Clerk Samino to email us? I don't know if you even have it, Council Flaherty's amendment? Because I agree that I like some of what she has. It's very hard to-
Put it back up on the screen because we're not changing, we're not changing anything she is saying, the amendment that's on the table right now. Okay.
But would it be, I don't know if you have an electronic copy, but if you do, could you send it? If not, that's fine. That's, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to take a roll call vote on the amendment that was seconded by Council Baraka. This does not vote on the original motion. It's the amendment to the motion. You're changing the original motion with Council Flaherty's motion, amendment. Everybody clear on that? If this passes, that will be in the resolution. If it doesn't, we go back to Council Mackin's original resolution, and we will discuss that and take that up for a vote after discussion. Counselor, I mean Clerk Samino.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Nay.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
No.
Council Mackin.
No.
Council O'Brien.
Nay.
Council Ringus.
No.
Council Ryan.
No.
Council Sasha.
No.
That's two in favor, seven opposed. The motion fails.
So the amendment fails. The motion is still on the table made by Council Mackin. I would propose an amendment to this motion. Can I do that? Do I have to step down? No.
So I can no longer raise my hand.
Well, physically raise your hand, Council Ryan does it.
I raised my hand. So I have a second, I'd like to amend-
Okay, hold on. I got an amendment prior to yours.
Okay.
So just as I stated, in the last paragraph, it states, "This resolution shall mandate and decree that the Braintree Fire Department be allowed to fly the thin blue line flag for as long as they so choose for these purposes." I just ask that we remove, shall mandate, because it's not our authority to remove this flag.
I'll second Madam President's amendment.
Okay, any discussion? Council Flaherty, do you want to discuss or do you want to, we've got an amendment on the table just to remove that one?
I don't have discussion on your amendment.
Okay, Council Connors, go ahead.
So I did want to, on Council Mackin's original proposal, which I was, or resolution, I was holding off stating, making my statement, but I would like to put that into the record now if I can-
We're on the original motion right now just for one word. So you know what? Can I, I just want to reread this because we're all over the place. Or Council Mackin, if you want to reread your motion that's on the table, or I'll reread it because I have it in writing. So the motion is, "Whereas the town of Braintree does not have any policies or ordinances prohibiting the display of memorial flags on fire trucks, whereas the thin blue line has been a conventionally-accepted law enforcement memorial marker or symbol for over 100 years, and whereas the town of Braintree not only stands in solidarity with our neighbor Waymouth in memorial of the tragic murder of Officer Michael Chesna, but also stands in the honoring of our own line-of-duty losses of Lieutenant Gregory Principi and Sergeant Ernest Decross and such losses across the Commonwealth. This resolution shall mandate, I amended, we scratched that, and decree that the Braintree Fire Department be allowed to fly the thin blue line flag for as as long as they so choose for these purposes." So that's the motion with the amendment on the floor right now. Council Connors, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to also state, my, the response from the residents has been phenomenal in my eyes. We've been inundated over the past few weeks with support for the Braintree Police, Fire, First Responders, and it was regardless of whether or not we were for or against this flag, which I think is something we should all be proud of. The emails have meaningful, the emails were, have been meaningful and full of thought on how to honor our fallen officers. The majority have requested for the flag to continue to fly, and many have requested the removal of the flag and asked to find other ways to honor the fallen in a manner that does not have such political overtones. I've not seen such a large response from the residents since the proposed rezoning. And I'm glad to see everybody get so involved in this. There are valid points on both sides of this discussion. In one letter, there was, that was in favor of keeping the flag. It was said that the flag is being categorized and labeled with names that have been arbitrarily assigned, symbols of meanings that are decades old, are being redefined to represent groups that were never intended to be associated with it. I fully agree with this. When we allow someone else's political agenda to take away a longstanding, longstanding tradition to those who gave their lives for our safety, it's not reasonable or fair. Our fallen definitely deserve more. In another letter supporting the removal of the flag, it stated, "I'm not going to stand here and tell a law enforcement officer that they are wrong in what this flag represents to them. Honoring a fallen colleague and friend, a stand of solidarity for those who knowingly put themselves in harm's way each day. However, I think it is tone deaf to ignore and refuse to acknowledge what some have taken this flag to represent. A line of solidarity and secrecy in which officers are discouraged from speaking out about wrongdoing and symbol aggressively, and a symbol aggressively used against those fighting for racial justice. The American flag, the red, white, and blue, should be the symbol that unites all of us. It's the symbol under which we acknowledge sacrifice along with liberty. Red symbolizes hardiness of valor, white symbolizes purity and innocence, and blue represents vigilance, perseverance, and justice. This is the meaning behind our U.S. flag and a description of the officers I know." These letters were great from everybody that we received. They then continued to say, "I would ask that you please address the compassion, the concerns of those who are asking for the flag to be removed. Do not disregard their pain, or disregard the way the flag has been used in some disrespectful manners. Please be open about the struggles for racial justice in the U.S. and the need for our honorable officers to speak up about the dishonorable actions of others." I also completely agree with this. I think everyone here does. "We have just begun the journey to eliminate racism in our community, as well as working with the police officers to ensure accountability for their actions. Until we can put aside our differences and begin to have open conversations to end discrimination, this division will continue to grow worse." "The council has also begun action to have a community conversations on racial and social diversity, equity, and inclusion. I look forward to getting involved in these. My hope is that we, as a town, can work within the community to change to end racism while also supporting our fallen officers. As there's a resolution to vote on the table tonight, I intend on voting yes, in honor of the fallen, fallen officers for which it has always stood, nothing more and nothing less than they deserve."
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Counselor O'Brien, do you have a hand raised?
I do. Thank you very much, Madam President. So my comment from the previous motion carries to this, but I do want to add a little more color. I did read every single one of the emails. In fact, I received approximately 240. These are unaudited results, but just to give everybody the scorecard, there were 212 for taking the flag down, and there were 173 for leaving the flag in place. Again, unaudited results. One email did constitute quite a few votes, as everybody knows, but it was about 240, and those are the numbers. Thank you.
I would like to make...
So I know we lost video on Counselor Mackin, but he is here. Go ahead.
I am still here. I think Counselor O'Brien is double counting certain votes. The majority of the synergies on that petition also sent emails, so I don't think it's correct to add that onto the total. Thank you.
Well, he did say unaudited, and I believe he was referring to emails, and the petition that came was one email, so we're not voting on numbers tonight. So we have a motion and an amendment on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Sasha.
So are we taking a vote?
I'm seeing all of you now, so you can do a hand wave.
Are we taking a vote on your amendment? Because...
Yeah, so it's Counselor Mackin's original amendment. On the last paragraph, "The resolution shall mandate," it's striking the word "shall mandate," because we do not have the authority to mandate this.
Right, so we're voting on your amendment, and then we will vote on Counselor Mackin's amended proposal, or we?
So if the amendment that I put out gets approved, the original motion changes. We'll vote on the amendment. If that passes, the original motion will now be, be as stated, without the word "shall mandate."
And then we will take another vote on the amended resolution, right?
Correct. I will reread it again, just so everybody's clear. Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So we are now voting on the amendment to strike the word "shall mandate" from Counselor Mackin's original motion. If this passes, the words will be stricken from his original motion. If it does not, his motion will stand as is. We will vote to the motion unless there's other amendments. Any questions? Counselor Ringus, I see you.
I just, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing your amendment right, because then I think the last line won't make any sense. Because if you, you just take out the words, are you saying, is your amendment that you're gonna, you're taking out "shall mandate" and "decree"? Because then the, if all you're doing is striking that, then it's, it's just gonna say, "This resolution blank" that the Braintree Fire Department is allowed to fly the thin blue line.
No, I took out "shall mandate." The resolution shall decree that the Braintree Fire Department...
Okay, that's fine.
Does anybody need me to reread that?
Could you once?
Say, yeah? Okay. So it's the original motion with the last paragraph. This is the amendment. "This resolution shall decree that the Braintree Fire Department be allowed to fly the thin blue line flag for as long as they so choose for these purposes." And I'm keeping that paragraph the same, because it, it's not dictating an authority. Again, the authority lies with the mail, but it says "they shall." That's not saying they will, or we're telling them they have. So that's how I'm reading that language. I'm leaving it as that. Any other discussion? Clerk Samino, roll call vote on the amendment, to approve the amendment or not.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Nay.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Samino. So we are with the original motion with the one amendment. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Flaherty.
I, I would like to amend the, the motion on the table with the following language. I'm gonna share my screen so that you can see it. Whoops. Okay. Okay, so there are many, many ways that you can pair the thin blue line flag and place it in an appropriate context, so that its meaning... There you go. That should work better. There are many, many ways that, that you can place the flag in a context where its meaning cannot be misconstrued. And I, I cannot put more, I cannot put enough emphasis on the need for that, because symbols take on the meaning of the way that you use them. And no one in this conversation denies that this symbol has been misused. And it's been misused often enough that now it delivers a message to minorities in Braintree that they're not necessarily as safe or as welcome as other people. And I think that that's not a message that we should deliver.
Respectfully, Madam President, can I call for a point of order?
Counselor Ringus, yeah, we lost your audio too.
My audio?
I mean, sorry, video.
Sorry. Can you see me now?
Yep.
Again, I'm, Counselor Flaherty, I'm mindful of, of what you're trying to do, and I, I appreciate what you're trying to do. But the two things I would say as a point of order is, I don't, I, I let the other one go, because I think, I thought it was important for discussion, but I don't see this as an amendment. This is a new resolution, because you're changing the entirety of what, of what Counselor Mackin was putting out there. So I don't see this as a true amendment. This is, this is, this is a new proposal. And we've already discussed the, it seems like the thing, the hang-up was the removal of the flag from the fire truck, and, and that's here again. So as, as much as I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I appreciate you trying to find that middle ground, I think we've already discussed that. And again, I just, from a procedural perspective, I don't believe this is an amendment.
So I'll, I'll address that. The way that, that amendments are defined is, there, there's, there's many kinds. Sometimes it's just adding a word or a clause, you know, the way that we just passed President, Madam President's amendment. Sometimes, sometimes you're adding them, sometimes you're reducing them. In this case, this is a substitution, so you're not wrong. But the substitution, as long as it's germane to the main motion, is an acceptable, an acceptable amendment to make. And so I'm going to proceed with this, because it's important to, it's important to the people that I represent, I think. It's important to me for my constituents to understand where I stand, and this is part of that. So I'm gonna read this amendment, which basically describes an effort to, for Braintree to more formally, more formally observe National Police Officer Appreciation Week, which is the second week in May, the second full week in May. And I propose is that during that week, we have the thin blue line flag placed on any part of, of town property. We have the thin blue line flag flown during that week, and we have a, we have a ceremony in which police officers are honored, past and present, and those in particular who have fallen in the line of duty. At that ceremony, I propose that, you know, the thin blue line flag can be used to honor those officers and should be flown proudly at that time. And, and this is the, the resolution as it reads. "A resolution in support of honoring police officers with the thin blue line flag. Whereas the Braintree Town Council wishes to honor our police officers for their hard work, bravery, and sacrifice with the display of the thin blue line flag, and whereas the town of Braintree prides itself on being a community of inclusion, where respect is extended for the dignity and worth of all our residents, regardless of race or origin, and in recognition of the recent history of misuse of the thin blue line flag in demonstrations of white supremacy or otherwise, as a divisive tool of political partisanship, and whereas the Braintree Town Council does not wish for the meaning of this flag to be misconstrued as representative of anything other than a solemn gesture of reverence for the sacrifices our police officers make on our behalf, and especially for those who have fallen in the line of duty, be it therefore resolved that the thin blue line flag will be respectfully removed from the Braintree Fire Truck to be displayed at the Braintree Police Department, and be it further resolved that the town of Braintree shall formally observe National Police Officer Appreciation Week on an annual basis, every year, in perpetuity, and be it further resolved that the thin blue line flag may be flown proudly on town property during this week, every year, in honor of police, and be it finally resolved that the town of Braintree will host a ceremony during this week in which the thin blue line flag may be raised in honor of police officers, past and present, and especially of those who have fallen in the line of duty."
Counselor Flaherty, as previous speaker stated, and we voted on, everybody had issue with removing the flag, who voted against it. That previous amendment did not pass. And I agree with the previous speaker on the other point, that it's just a, a brand-new resolution. I think we vote on this amendment, the motion that's on the floor. If you want to bring another resolution forward, at another time, you may so choose. Any discussion on, on the amendment as presented by Counselor Flaherty? We still have the main motion. Now we're addressing the amendment. Is there a second to this amendment?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded on the amendment to Counselor Flaherty. Put it back up on the screen, Clerk Samino. Any further discussion?
If I could, Madam?
Who's it? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Ringus.
So again, I'm gonna ask that people vote no on this, for the sole purpose that under, we govern ourselves under Robert's Rules of Order. It's parliamentary procedure. An amendment is used to fine-tune a motion to make it more acceptable to the group. The amendment must be related to the main motion, and it cannot be phrased in a way that would defeat the main motion. So this would defeat the main motion. It's not an amendment.
Is the main motion to honor police officers, or is it something else?
It is to honor police officers.
This is also to honor police officers.
But your resolution as a whole is a very different...
It's, it's been seconded, so we have to vote.
Yeah, exactly. Take it, so, sorry. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Nay.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
No.
Counselor Mackin.
No.
Counselor O'Brien.
Nay.
Counselor Ringus.
No.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
Counselor Sasha.
No.
It's... Two in favor, seven opposed. Motion fails.
The amendment fails. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Counselor Flaherty.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
Okay, go ahead. And, and just be mindful of what's been said, that we do not want to be changing the context of the original motion that's out there.
So, in my view, this doesn't change the context, because this is about honoring police officers, which I believe should best be done without, without placing a, a symbol in, in a position where it can be misinterpreted. And it's, the best way to defend the meaning of the thin blue line is to pair it with what it's supposed to mean. And if you don't pair it with what it's supposed to mean, then anybody who passes it can make their own decision about what they think it means. So to that end, I propose, this council recently allocated money for a pocket park to be, to, well, they, they allocated money for land to be purchased at the corner of Liberty and Grove. And the intention of that purchase is to create a pocket park in that area behind where the CVS, the proposed CVS is expected to be. So the, that park, what I propose is that we designate that park as a police memorial park, and, and we extend...
I do think you're, where you're going with this is completely different than the motion that's on the table. And I'm gonna ask that we take a vote for this, and if you want to make that motion after, we vote on this?
This is an amendment to the motion that's on the table.
But you're changing the... Go ahead, continue. I want to allow it.
So we allocated money for, for the purchase of a pocket park, and my suggestion is that we take that pocket park and we, and we, and we decide that it's going to be a police memorial park. And then we invite the Braintree Police Department to decide how precisely they would like to memorialize police at that park. And they might...
Counselor, if I can ask you, so what is your amendment? We need some language.
Well, I'll share my screen. Hang on. Okay. So the idea on this one is that the police officers would be invited to decide, to decide how they'd like to memorialize police in this park. Could be police officers in general, or it could be fallen officers in particular, or it could be a particular fallen officer. If, if the police department would like to honor Sergeant Chesna with this, with this park, that would be appropriate. If they would like to honor Officer Bill Verasso, who recently passed, that would also be appropriate. And that's what... And that's what this resolution describes. "A resolution in support of honoring police officers with the Thin Blue Line flag. Whereas the Braintree Town Council wishes to honor our police officers for their hard work, bravery and sacrifice with a display of the Thin Blue Line flag. And whereas the town of Braintree prides itself on being a community of inclusion, where respect is extended for the dignity and worth of all our residents regardless of race or origin. And in recognition of the recent history of misuse of the Thin Blue Line flag in demonstrations of white supremacy or otherwise, as a divisive tool of political partisanship. And whereas the Braintree Town Council does not wish for the meaning of this flag to be misconstrued as representative of anything other than a solemn gesture of reverence for the sacrifices our police officers make on our behalf, and especially for those who have fallen in the line of duty. And whereas the town of Braintree has recently purchased land at the corner of Liberty and Grove Street with the intention of establishing a pocket park on that site. Be it therefore resolved that the town of Braintree hereby designates that pocket park as a police memorial park. And be it therefore resolved that the town of Braintree will invite the Braintree Police Department to determine the manner in which police will be memorialized there. And be it therefore resolved that the town council supports the allocation of funding to build a permanent memorial on that site. And be it finally resolved that the Thin Blue Line flag will be respectfully removed from the Braintree Fire Truck to be displayed at the Braintree Police Department until it can be moved to fly in perpetuity on the site of the police memorial park at the corner of Liberty and Grove Street."
Okay, so there's a motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna call on Solicitor Todd because I don't.
Madam, Madam President, take a quick vote. This is the same vote we just took. I respect, I respect Julia Flaherty, I respect it, but it's, it's still got the language of taking, taking it off the fire trucks, which, you know, we've already voted on that a couple of times. I, I, I respect everything about the motion except that part. So it's still the same motion. I mean, I, I don't need to have an opinion, we can vote on it right now. So I think the problem is that it leaves in the pot about taking it off the trucks. So it really doesn't change the motion that we've already voted on twice.
It doesn't, it's changing the original motion. But Solicitor Todd, I just want you to weigh in and be there, because, so we don't keep going round on this? If you could, please.
Counsel Hume, I only have three, this is the last one.
Okay, but Solicitor Todd, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo the sentiments of the, of the council and, and express my incredible respect for the time that Counsel Flaherty spent on these three resolutions. And to note that, yes, you can certainly amend, amend through substitution, that is allowed in the rules. But what you cannot do is make an amendment that does nothing but make the motion a rejection of the original motion. That is not proper nor in order under Robert's Rules. In this case, Counsel Mackin has sought to honor and support the police through the display of the blue light, blue line flag on the fire truck specifically. So while Counsel Flaherty's resolutions do, do align with that same intent to support the police, they are a dramatic change and effective rejection of the manner in which Counsel Mackin seeks to do that in his resolution.
So do we even need to vote on this amendment? Do we have to?
I would suggest at this point, there's been a motion and a second and there's been discussion.
All right, Clerk Semino, roll call vote on the amendment presented by Counsel Flaherty, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Nay.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
No.
Counsel Mackin.
No.
Counsel O'Brien.
Nay.
Counsel Ringus.
No.
Counsel Sasha.
No.
I apologize, Counsel Ryan.
No, thank you.
Who in favor, seven opposed, amendment fails.
We are back to the main motion with the word shall mandate, shall mandate stricken from the bottom. Is there any further discussion on that? And I saw Counsel Sasha's hands go up first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I only spoke before about Counsel Flaherty's amendment. And I just wanted to say more broadly about this and Counsel Flaherty's amendments. You know, I think those, I think those are really good and meaningful ideas. I think the problem that I have is that all of them involve taking down the flag now for something that may happen later. And I think what I've heard from the community, and, and there has been broad agreement from everybody that's contacted the council, that they want to do something to celebrate our, our police and firefighters, both those who are serving us now and those who no longer are. And I think that the council should start thinking about setting a date for those community conversations on race. Because I think there is some broad agreement on this. I know this flag is a divisive issue, but for me, what this is going to come down to is we don't have an alternative right now. These things that have been suggested are good ideas, some residents have sent in other ideas, but none of them exist yet. And anything that we do tonight, even though this is not a binding resolution, would have the effect of saying, remove the flag. And in the short term, with no other substitution, I, I don't think that reflects the will of the majority of the residents. And so I will be supporting Counsel Mackin's resolution. Thank you.
Counsel, to your point too Sasha, then I'm going to get to Counsel O'Brien and then Counsel Mackin. We are still working on a speaker because of, this is a national issue. Speakers are in high demand, there were summer issues. I've been working with the mayor's office, the police department and the superintendent, and getting the kids back to school, the issues the school department's been facing, and scheduling on the end of the speakers that we are looking to get, the consultants we are looking to get. So it is still going on. It is, I did, I said it probably would not happen in September, but, oh, August rather. But I am still working on it. I made that announcement and we will be having that. I did not want to rush it to get the right person, the right fit for Braintree. But this resolution is before us tonight, so we have to address it. So Counsel O'Brien, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. So in, in order, my comments still stand, my original comments. The scorecard I provided was informational only, and thank you, Madam President. I did state it was unaudited. It was more because the residents don't get our email, so it was unaudited. But lastly, one of the, or a couple of emails, I actually did discuss the Hatch Act, and whether or not this was in alignment or against the Hatch Act. And I did ask for an opinion from our current Chief of Staff, who was formerly our town Solicitor, which I'll call Chief, Chief of Staff Todd. And according to the Hatch Act, this does not specifically relate as it pertains to the Fire Department because it's not a political statement, although some are making it look that way. However, that said, I'm, I'm kind of leery, but I just want to give, to give those people that did mention the Hatch Act the opportunity to know that I did gather an opinion, it doesn't change any of my voting, but it is informational. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien. Counsel Mackin and Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll be quick. I, I, I do sincerely respect and admire the work Counsel Flaherty put in. You could tell it was very thoughtful and detailed. But this was, this was also about our firefighters, you know, being able to have the ability to honor the police as they choose. And our fire chief and our firefighters have been adamant that this is what they'd like to do. Thank you, that's all.
Counsel Ryan.
I want to thank Counsel Flaherty for her thoughtful presentations and ideas tonight. And I, thank you, Julia, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so I'm going to reread the original motion as amended. This is what we will be voting on. A vote of support, the motion passes. You vote against, the vote, vote against, it does not pass. This motion was presented by Counselor Mackin. Whereas the town of Braintree does not have any policies or ordinances prohibiting the display of memorial flags on fire trucks. Whereas the Thin Blue Line has been a conventionally accepted law enforcement memorial marker or symbol for over 100 years. And whereas the town of Braintree not only stands in solidarity with our neighbor Waymouth in memorial of the tragic murder of Officer Michael Chesna, but also stands in the honoring of our own line of duty losses of Lieutenant Gregory Prinsby and Sergeant Ernest Cross, and such losses across the Commonwealth. This resolution shall, and we struck out mandate and. So this resolution shall decree that the Braintree Fire Department be allowed to fly the Thin Blue Line flag for as long as they so choose for these purposes. Clerk Semino, a roll call vote on that motion, please.
We need a second, John, that?
Second. I thought it was seconded already.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, Counsel Erica.
Thank you, I would just like to go on the record, I believe that supporting our public safety heroes.
Point of order, we're just voting right now. The discussion's ended.
No.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
No.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Nay.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
That's six in favor, three opposed, motion passes.
The motion passes. Thank you all for all the input and the professionalism. We can all have discussions on both sides of the issues. Thank you, Counsel Mackin and Flaherty, for all your work on this, on the issues. With that, we are moving on to the agenda. New business, town club decisions. Okay, we're moving on to referrals. Referral to the Committee on Ways and Means 20058. The mayor requests for appropriation Braintree historic inventory of 2020 project or take up any action relative thereto.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, Counsel Ringus seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to referral to the Committee on the Department of Public Works.
Ways and Means, just one more, please.
Referral of 20059, Council President, referral to the Committee on Ways and Means, the reappointment of the outside auditor, taking up any action relative thereto, and I would move that.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second, motion made by Counsel Ryan, Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Nay.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam President, I believe we can make one motion for all eight, we don't need to vote eight times.
Yep, Counsel Ringus, referral to Committee on the Department of Public Works, the referrals.
Yes, I would, we're going to refer, I would move to refer to the Committee on the Department of Public Works. 20060 National Grid Petition, 14 Sterling Park, or take up any action relative thereto. 20061 National Grid Petition, 79 Edgemont Road, or take up any action relative thereto. 20062 National Grid Petition, Linden Street, or take up any action relative thereto. 20063 National Grid Petition, 15 Hemlock Street, or take up any action relative thereto. 20064 National Grid Petition, 49 Cotton Ave, or take up any action relative thereto. 265 National Grant Petition, 61 Birchcroft Road, or take up any action relative thereto. And finally, 20066 National Grid Petition, 59 Hancock Street, or take up any action relative thereto. There's an additional one listed on the agenda, which we're not moving to Public Works tonight.
Correct.
So moved. Second.
Who did that second?
Charles Ryan.
Okay, sorry, you sounded different. There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan for the referrals to the Department of Public Works. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, moving on to referral to the Committee of Elder Affairs and Veteran Services, Counsel Ringus.
I would move 02930, Counselor Flaherty, discussion, committee objectives, or take up any action relative thereto, referring that to the Committee of Elder Affairs and Veteran Services.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Semino, that is unanimous. Moving on, we have one other same night action request. It does require, sorry, a same night action request plus an item that was asked by Counsel Sasha after the agenda was done. It requires a two thirds vote to get on the agenda. His request is a referral to the Committee on Public Safety for the school administration and DPW and residents to review a likely walking and biking routes to school and propose any changes necessary to ensure safe passage, adequate bike route storage, et cetera. Clerk Semino, can you do a roll call vote to get this on the agenda, please?
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, so it will be on the agenda now for the referral. We will, Clerk Semino, if you could get an item number for this too, that would be great. But for the referral to the Committee on Public Safety, is there a motion to refer it?
It will be 20067.
What was the first one?
20067.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to refer item 20067 to the Committee on Public Safety? Does anybody need me to reread what the request is for?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Roll call vote, please. Any objection to same night action on this? Okay, go forward, the roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, our next, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 15th at 7:30. I want to thank all those in attendance with the public. Again, thank you to all the town council committees for all your work and effort on all these issues tonight. Thank you to the press for being here, as always, and to Steve Larry and town Solicitor and Chief of Staff Nicole Todd, and DPW Director Jim Arsenal is still with us, and Steve Larry, who makes all these Zoom meetings happen and is with every meeting with us every night, from the very beginning to the very end. So thank you very much, Steve Larry. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan to adjourn. Roll call vote.